Okay, thank you for the clarification or the work on the technical difficulties. And Ben, I'd like to start out, I think the most appropriate way to start is just saying thank you after seeing all the 2024 highlights. And I say thank you to you, but all the staff here and all the folks, the boots on the ground doing all the work because looking at those slides, I don't think it does justice, all the work that's being done. And you can actually look at each individual division and put all that kind of work up there. And just as an individual division, it shows you how much work we're being done. But as in totality, it really is impressive to see. And I think I can confidently say you're outpacing the speed of what traditional government moves at. And I think it's appreciated, but it's also what I think our community deserves coming out of the 2021 drought and how we're making these really drastic improvements. And it's neat because when you look at government, I think if you're looking for progress, if you look at yesterday, you'll never see it. But we just got a snapshot of 12 months ago when we were sitting in Fairfax, giving direction to staff and inputting where the workload should be and looking back to see how much progress being made. It's very impressive. So thank you very much to staff and also for everything that's going to go in today. I know it's a lot of work to be able to move offsite and put all this up. So the efforts appreciated. Before we move on to the first item, I'd like to go ahead and give the opportunity for the public to comment.
Yes, I have Mimi Willard.
Good morning. I'm Mimi Willard with the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. And this district has made just excellent strides under the current board and the leadership of the staff, particularly in the last couple of years in terms of public inclusion, transparency, Brown Act compliance process, and of course, a fair rate structure and excellent progress on a water supply roadmap. So I am reluctant, but will comment nonetheless about something that has disappointed me, which is that today there is no real-time remote participation in this meeting, unlike others that you are conducting that way. That, of course, excludes the disabled and those who work at home or have caregiving responsibilities who can't be here. And that, of course, is an equity issue. And I know this board is concerned about equity. This was readily doable because this very room is the place where the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority meets and does have meetings with remote, real-time public participation. Also, I think today it would have been better if there had been presentation materials posted in advance so that the public could review them and provide input in advance in order to comply with a 24-hour advanced email for those cutoff for those who wanted to do public comment via email. So the other thing of concern to me is that at your lunch meeting today, which will occur, a discussion of changes to the dual noticing. And I think that that should not be a discussion that is occurring in a special board meeting. I understand that you will simply be developing ideas and that they will be approved at a later time, but much of that vital discussion really should be included in a regular board meeting in which the public can participate in real time, both remotely and in person. And with all of the usual channels. More importantly, I think it is time to end the process of this dual noticing. The board meeting is a board meeting. It should be conducted by the board president under the same processes and at the same time of day as a regular board meeting. And that will be an opportunity for all of the public and all of the directors to readily Holding this discussion in a special meeting is, it sends an unfortunate message about public inclusion.
As a supporter... I'm sorry, this meeting, the three minutes are up. Thank you for your comment. I've heard that.
Anyhow, I appreciate the opportunity to comment and to, again, express my support for your overall progress here and to object to some preventable lapses that are inherent in specifics of this particular meeting.
Great, thank you.
No more.
No, they're for the comment. Great. And with that, we'll turn it over to Adrian.
Sure. Thank you, Adrian Martin's Communications and Public Affairs Manager. And just wanted to go through a few logistics of how the presentation of the 2025 Strategic Work Plan is set up. So on, and staff have all worked together to put together this work plan for the year. It is organized by our five goals, as Ben mentioned earlier. And so when we go through each goal, you'll first see that goal, just a quick refresh of what that goal is in the five-year strategic plan. And then on the following slide, you'll see the first objective of that goal. And then with all of the action items associated with that objective listed, you'll notice there will be little checkmarks next to each of those action items if we plan to do work on them in this year's work plan. And then on the following slide, we'll list out all of the work that is planned. And so each staff will go through their areas following that format. And of course, there'll be time for input as we go through each of those. And so we will be starting with Goal One, which Paul will kick off. And I'm going to bring this clicker down to you, Paul.
Turn it on, on the side. Yeah, it's not even letting me slide. Hold on, it's freezing.
I'm sorry, are we able to see the slides? Are they still frozen?
Yeah, they're frozen. I'm turning it on.
Yeah, it's not an issue of the clicker, it's the computer itself.
Should have done Goal A, I think potentially new audio/video equipment for this calendar here.
Okay, should we, can you hear me or do I need to speak very close to this? Is this working? That's better? Okay, a little closer. Great. Well, good morning, Paul Selay, Water Resources Director. And this doesn't feel formal at all in our setup today, but it is a retreat. So feel free to interrupt, throw things at me, maybe not throw things at me, but you know, do interrupt, ask questions. And I'm going to try to, you know, tell stories as we go through this to try to keep it a little bit lighter. So forgive me if I take any poetic license, but Goal One is around reliable water supply, which seems like a really good idea for a water district. And the four objectives that we have kind of underpinning that Goal One are around reducing potable water use. You heard Ben kicking off, that's our number one go-to water efficiency is our very first thought throughout this organization. And we'll see a little bit more about that in the coming slides. And then, given our past experience, fairly recent drought, and it was fairly severe, augmenting our existing water supply is sort of what we've been engaged in for the last two or three years now. And then recognizing that we don't operate in a vacuum, we have partners, and whether we like to think of them as partners or not, those include regulators, but also our water supply partners, and we'll talk a little bit about those. And then, of course, underpinning everything that we do is how, what our customers think about our water, how it tastes even, and the actual quality down to the chemical composition of the water is important to us. And now I'm going to try to advance the slides here. Ah, it worked. So as Adrian was saying, the structure of Goal One is Objective One, reducing potable reuse. And we have some numeric goals up here, 800 acre feet in five years, and we're going to meet the state standards. And I'll tell you in a minute where we kind of relate to in each of those. But you can see each of the checkmarks on the A through F there, we're working in water efficiency on everything that we have. Recognizing, and I think Ben said this earlier as well, that not everything is included in the strategic work plan, right? So there are elements that the team's working on that's outside of these. So what are we up to this year? We're continuing to implement the Water Efficiency Master Plan that the board approved earlier in 2024. And within that plan, which is, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it in some detail, it's really quite a creative process that went through into creating, into making that plan. You can take a really light level look at it, but to the extent that you want more detailed information and rationale, you can really drill down even into the spreadsheets that, you know, quantify how much water savings per widget in terms of water efficiency. So it's a really valuable resource for us and for our customers. And when we think about water efficiency, we think about incentives. And we've got a wide range of incentives available to our customers, and we're continuing to develop more. Couple examples, you know, the creativity within that department, we've got the partnership with EO giving away rain barrels. And it's a silly little thing, but it really drives public engagement and participation. And it's blown away the goals that we set for rain barrels. I think it was 15,000 gallons of water, and there's over 35,000 gallons of rain barrels that have gone out the door. And they're free, so people are really incentivized to come pick them up. But it's still, it's a program that needs to be developed, it's being tracked, and metrics are being assessed on it. In addition, you know, Ben talked about some of the creative pilot projects around water loss. So this group is not only creative, it's technical. So in terms of water loss, they're looking at how do acoustic devices help us pinpoint where leaks are. And right now, we've got two pilots. One is already installed, there's a series of AMI meters in two neighborhoods in San Rafael, so about 45 meters in total in two distinct neighborhoods. And that's going to be paired with, in sort of a direct competition, with hydrant loggers, acoustic loggers that go onto hydrant, you know, where the hydrant caps are, and they listen for leaks. Within days of, in one neighborhood, of deploying the AMI meters, these are cam strap meters with acoustic leak detection, we found averages 20, we found four leaks. Two of the leaks were out in the system, and we were able to go into our SAP work records to see if they'd already been identified. And they had by the guys who'd just gone through with the listening ones in November. So we know the AMI is finding leaks out in the system already, with just 20 meters out in that neighborhood. The other two, one of them exhibited meter movement and was hearing a noise, so that's on the customer's side of the meter. Another one exhibited meter movement but no noise. So we're able to pinpoint with AMI the sort of range of leaks that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise, it seems. And that's just the one neighborhood. The other neighborhood, of course, is much less interesting, absolutely nothing is happening in that neighborhood. It's like, they're all quiet, everything's going great, which speaks to kind of our infrastructure. In some neighborhoods, we've got older, more leak-prone pipes, different types of soil and those sorts of things. Anyway, so there's a lot of things going on in our water efficiency group.
How far away was the leak from the meters?
I want to say it was like 30 feet.
Oh, it's close.
Yeah. It's actually on the service line where it joins the main, there are some isolators there that are in that neighborhood that are kind of known to leak, and that's why we'd found them when we went through in November with the kind of listening, the manual listening devices.
When they're going to be fixed?
They're on a list, and we'll get to them, but not until after the pilots, because we want to be able to see if the acoustic loggers on the hydrants in that neighborhood, when we get those installed, will those be able to find those leaks as well.
Yeah, they used to aren't as good, the hydrant ones, from what I understand.
Yeah, we're thinking maybe that's the same. So that's interesting.
Paul, do we have a target for the amount of loss due to leakage? We're already, I think comparatively in good shape, but...
We are in good shape. We certainly meet the state regulations. We've nominally picked off about 10%, so we're looking for somewhere in that range to try to shave that down, but it's really just a nominal 10% at this point. I think with AMI acoustic, you're going to get a lot of information, and you'll be able to prioritize leak replacements, you know, in a different way than we can today. You'll determine a leak maybe under a very busy street that's not surfacing, and you'll be able to address it in a nighttime operation rather than, oops, it broke and we're in the middle of daytime traffic. So there's different ways you can use this information.
Our early pilot showed a 5% savings from leak detection, which is in line with what the savings AMI was able to prove in Contra Costa, Alameda, the parts of East Bay Mud, as well as Mountain View. So that's 1,250 acre feet per year of water savings for our customers, which is about 3,000 customers that would be able to get water if we're able to implement this with no rain in our forecast. I'm really glad this is a priority and continues to be, and I hope you accelerate it.
I think we're interested certainly in the water savings, and it's to be determined at this point exactly what that's going to be.
Paul, I didn't realize that it may provide an ability to catch problems before they get really big, like main breaks and things like that. Is that, do you really see that potential?
I do, yeah. I mean, the leaks that I'm talking about today as the example in the neighborhoods, those are non-surfacing leaks. So right now, you wouldn't know about them unless the guys had picked them up, which they did, only because they surveyed that neighborhood in November. So it's really, it has a lot of potential, and that's kind of why we want to look at whether this cam strap acoustic leak detection on AMI meters is useful for us. So that's the goal of that, that particular study.
Do you think we can get within 10%? That's an interesting comment. You said you thought we could shoot for 10%, but do you think we can determine that with that level of sophistication, that we can actually see we're leaking those kind of numbers?
I don't know that you'll be able to determine how much water a leak is leaking based on the cam strap, based on an acoustic detection. You'll be able to tell if one is larger than another.
No, what I'm asking...
I know, I'm getting there. But Director Kush had asked about reducing water loss. There's a technical definition of water loss, and right now, we're somewhere in the region of, in terms of real water losses, the stuff that goes out in the street, for example, is about 1,000 acre feet, something like that. So if we can capture 10% of that, you know, reducing that number by 10% would be a good achievement for us. Different from what Director Smith is talking about, where there's been some evidence in different water agencies that have deployed AMI and they're reporting water savings as opposed to reducing leaks. Different.
And Director Russell, I think maybe part of your question was also, would we be able to quantify, right? So we're talking about our leaks are 10% and targeting 10%, the granularity. I think the answer is over time, probably yes, because we have a pretty good data set through annual reporting on our lost water. And we'll perhaps be able to see that come down, also look at, are we capturing more leaks than we had been capturing with our manual process? So it'll be interesting. I think the answer is we're going to be in a better place than we had been, how much better, and will we? But I think having a goal is a good thing to have, because it does strive for not just trying to meet it, but also improving our quantification and understanding of the data.
No question that the goal is a good idea. The question I had is the one you started on, which is, can you even know if you're meeting the goal? Is it possible? Because unless we're doing something more sophisticated with our approach, which I don't think we are, the big meters versus the small meters, you know, you've got that intrinsic error that goes along with your inability, any water company's inability to know how much water was actually delivered, and then how much was sold. The sold part's pretty easy, the delivered side's not so easy. You know, a 1% error in a 36-inch meter is a lot more than a 1% error in a 5/8 meter. So you had that problem of, if you achieve the goal, would you know? I like what you said, though, and I think it's right on, the Danish are pushing this really hard. And I don't know if we, have we talked to them yet?
These are the, that is the meter that we're using.
Yeah, I know. But we should talk to them about their thoughts. My thinking is, the presentation they made at Sonoma Water was very effective, and the Danish government is pushing this really hard. And so I think there's some expertise they have that may extend beyond ours that could be useful, but I like the idea of kind of keeping the marked list with the hash, you know, that, okay, we now detected 52 leaks. Whether they're, whether they achieve our list of fixing now or not. And one thing that's interesting about this is, it's going to be, we're going to find out the leak, whether it's big or little, right? So I don't know how we go, the next part to figure out if it gets on the priority list to do now or later, you know, maybe we'll have to dig up a few and find out, well, that probably wasn't really worth it, but, or something like that. But that idea, I think, of keeping the list is useful, and then keep, you know, keep track.
Yeah.
At some point, one would think you could achieve at least stasis with the, you know, keeping up with the new leaks from the old leaks, you know?
Right.
Wipe out old ones and new ones happen, but there might, should be some equilibrium there that lets you stay in some kind of a, of a better...
Yeah, I think more information we have is better, for sure. And along those lines, the Water Efficiency Group is, we're one of 26 agencies nationwide that is participating in this residential end-use survey. So that's going to be kind of interesting to see how our water use and our customers are using this. End-use studies tell you how customers are using water, how much is being used in washing machines, showers, this sort of typical type flume type data set, and of course, outdoors as well. And then partnerships, I think I would highlight on this list, the partnership with Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. I know the board certainly pointed that out, and it would be nice to have consistency between our programs and their programs and for them to support each other. And I understand water efficiency staff listened to and attended a Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority seminar. For the entire hour, Marin water wasn't mentioned. And so we know we have work to do in this area, and it's our priority for this partnership. So look forward to updating the board with some information on that as we move forward. And then, of course, you know, at the boards, we've talked a little bit with the board about different policy incentives. We've got gray water, we've got, you know, how we landscaping uses. And there are additional policies that the board could consider if you're interested in driving water use further. Things like water budgets, for example, come to mind as we're talking about AMI and getting our customers' AMI meters, you know, within three or four years, that'll be fully deployed. It's a different relationship our customers will be able to have with how they use water. And so water budgets may be an area that the board's interested in moving forward or not, but it is an opportunity for us to talk about.
Yeah, on that point, Paul, this is the second time you've brought up water budgets as a potential way to establish a rate structure going forward. I think it'd be helpful if maybe in a future meeting, you could go through the details of how that actually works and how it differs from what we currently do. I think it'd be, it seems like a topic that's getting a lot of interest, and it'd be great to learn more about it and how we might implement it. Okay, take a look at that.
And it's how our commercial system works.
Yeah, no doubt. With what's happening in LA, it's a wake-up call for us. I know, for me, I've always been a little scared, now I'm super scared. And I'd love a report out from the staff on lessons learned down there, how the water agency could have done better, where our vulnerabilities are that we're not aware of, or we were not aware of before. And I don't think there could be any more political will and customer will for us to step up and maybe, and reprioritize the wildfire risk for our community. And I would say now is the time to do that. I'm getting calls repeatedly, what are you going to do? And I'm very proud of our efforts. I think we have, are leading, we're doing work that this agency has never done before. No doubt we can do more, 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 and no doubt we can never do enough. So I think this is, this is going to deserve some more focus in the coming weeks.
I did want to mention... Time, under the resiliency section, this will be addressed as well, emergency fairness, and then...
We have operations on...
Correct, and that's going to, we're going to take a look at some emergency planning around that at a future upcoming meeting.
Right, well, we'll definitely be continuing this discussion on Friday. We're bringing an item at the request of President Sampson to really take a look at the full spectrum of our activities as it relates to wildfires, both a refresher on our planning efforts that we're doing over time, but also talking about understanding what we do. For example, we have a red flag, what are our protocols, what do we do in-house, do we top off tanks, how do we coordinate with the county, and we'll go on. So that'll be a rich discussion we're anticipating this Friday.
And thank you for bringing that so quickly, it's appreciated.
I've been talking to, LA Water Empires been talking to me about their situation, so I'll keep you guys updated as I hear things more from them. But in '06, San Francisco ran into exactly the same problem that occurred in Pacific Palisades. And in '06 or '08, they designed and installed a saltwater injection system, and it's become clear to me that I think it would be worthwhile to actually create a cross-connection between the bay water and the drinking water system, and operate it in emergencies only, obviously, because they've already, you know, it's all boil water notices now in LA because of losing pressure. So whether they had saltwater in the mains or not would make very little difference. But San Francisco immediately responded in '08 to this problem, exactly the same problem. Fire hydrants had no water in the earthquake.
Right. And for clarity, as you know, Director Russell, it's a separate system. You're suggesting kind of a big innovative thought of, do you build on that idea, our system and others as a backup, where you would pump from the bay, is an intriguing thought, Director Russell.
It is, it is. And like I said, I've been doing a lot of thinking about it, so that's kind of where I'm at at the moment.
Okay, continuing on, so just before we leave water efficiency, I wanted to just sort of, you know, how do you, how do I think about our water efficiency group? And where does it sit in terms of, is it good, is it average, where are we? And, you know, as I think about, and just in terms of the organization as well, you know, you look at the staff, they're creative, dedicated, they're technically competent folks, and they're really on a mission to improve water efficiency. And that's supported throughout the organization, through management, all the way to the Board of Directors. We would be really hard pushed to find a water efficiency group similarly resourced and dedicated within probably the entire state of California. This is really one of the groups in the organization that we should be proud of. And, you know, there, I think, recently, 2023 WaterSense Award for Excellence, just program excellence. Another one in 2023, the Irrigation Association Award for, I think it was Educational Outreach. And in 2024, it's a U.S. EPA award as well for this group that was towards the end of this year. So I think it's just an outstanding group that we should be proud of as an organization and continue to support as we move forward.
And I think it's worth noting that Kerry's not here today, but the efforts that Kerry is doing are really commendable, so please pass along our thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so augmenting existing water supply, I think you've probably had enough of me from talking about water supply, but I mean, we're going to, we're going to roll through this pretty quickly. Of course, we're checking the two main bullets here in terms of short-term, long-term initiatives. And we're kind of, right now, in the middle of, if we're looking at the long-term, Item B here on this bullet list, we're in the middle of sort of a decision-making process where staff is bringing to the board kind of the wrap-up information necessary to help evaluate what these projects are and which ones we should be moving forward. And it's exciting, an exciting time, we're going to have, you know, a project to move forward and get into design and review. In terms of the short-term work, Ben noted earlier, the Nikasio spillway project has been kind of pulled out. And we did have some, you know, we heard some comments from the board at the last board meeting, and we'll be addressing those on the 21st before we get into the next level presentation. One of the comments was, you know, hey, what about these other spillways? Let's get on those, you know, how come we seem to have dropped the ball on those? What's happening? And it's a fair comment, but, you know, remembering that Nikasio was constructed with the forethought to install a spillway increase, right? The dam is already high enough, those sorts of characteristics aren't present at the other reservoirs. It's much, much more of a kind of a shoehorned process to see what we can get out of them. But nevertheless, I think it was a fair comment. We'll be talking about some of those comments and others at the next, at the next board meeting. Any questions on long-term water supply?
I didn't say you dropped the ball, but...
No. No.
Super excited to hear about another opportunity.
Yeah. Okay, so I mentioned, you know, goal three, this is about preserving or enhancing our existing partnerships. Those are across a range of areas of recycled water. We, we're continuing our work with the North Bay Water Reuse Authority and the local sanitation districts. Our probably number one partner is Sonoma Water for obvious reasons. They provide up to 20, 25% of our water supply. And we're continuing to work not just with Sonoma Water, but in terms of our regional projects, we're looking at the other water contractors. We know that we may need their support at some point in the future. And so we're, we're continuing to build our relations, making sure they understand what we're doing and we understand what they need in terms of support from us. And of course, we can't do anything without our state and federal regulators. And not the least of which is funding, which we know we've, we've talked about with the board. We've got this WRTA kind of allocation that we've been struggling to access. And I'm sure Sean and Brad will be talking about the importance of funding on, on capital projects going forward. So then our last objective in this section for goal one is around water quality and providing high water quality. And again, we're trying, attempting to tackle all of the elements that we've talked about here. In terms of, you know, reservoir management plans, we own and operate seven reservoirs and we don't have a single written plan for any of them. Not that that's a terrible thing, but it, it just as an organization of our age, it would be useful for us to have documents that describe each reservoir, what the infrastructure is around each reservoir, what our water quality goals are within the reservoir. And how do we want to operate these reservoirs? What are the rules of operation and things like that? And, you know, some of that is going to dovetail into some of Sean's work on the watershed, right? Which watershed is the area that water runs off into our reservoirs? And, you know, is there, are there areas of erosion that can be helped, right? Brush clearing is important for fire, but is it contrary to, 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 to good, clean water going into the reservoir? So we want to make sure those activities kind of support each other. And, you know, we've been continuously chipping away at the treatment process. We look at different aspects of the treatment process. Most recently, in collaboration with operations and engineering, there was a pilot at the treatment plants for liquid ammonium sulfate. I think the board understands that we, we, we have chlorine disinfection process as our primary disinfection. And we make chloramines using aqueous ammonia. And that chloramine is a long lasting residual out in the system. That's why we switched to that for other reasons as well. But using aqueous ammonia is a little bit of a dangerous chemical, for lack of a better term, right? It, it's lighter than air. If there is a breach, that chemical can escape the treatment plant and it will form a plume. As a result of that, we've got to have a risk management plan associated with that. And that gets reviewed and updated every single year. And as, as I think the board appreciates, regulations never get simpler. So the plans bloat as they go along and different regulators come in and different levels of critical planning become more and more important. So this, and of course, there's a danger to staff as well who have to work on these systems. If we can switch to liquid ammonium sulfate, those risks go away. So there seems to be some benefit for us to think about changing. And, and we've done the pilot, it's been successful in terms of a water quality perspective. There are suppliers for ammonium sulfate out there, maybe more suppliers than there are for aqueous ammonia. So it seems like that that's churning up a move to change our practices around creating chloramine.
Another benefit of moving away from this chemical, it does change the nature of first responders to some sort of an emergency at the plant where it's a safer environment to respond. So you're likely to get kind of a quicker response and less damage, say wildfire considerations or seismic event or something like that. So there really are multiple benefits on this. It's quite an important initiative for the organization.
Paul, just, just on the chloramines, in, in the really basic science, there's started to come, you know, some, some studies have started to come up regarding the safety of chloramines. I'm guessing it'll be a long time before this enters the regulatory realm. Are you hearing anything about that yet?
Yes, just very faintly at this point.
It's pretty early.
Yeah, I mean, there is some information we, we put out on our website to address the most recent questions that came up around disinfection practices. And I know US EPA at least have on their calendar, at least did, they, they had a goal of by summer of 2025 to review disinfection byproducts. There's some different families that they had, you know, they wanted to review and some microbial. So there may be some disinfection practice changes coming down through the regulatory process, but it will, it will be some time.
And I, I did want to note on disinfection byproducts, the nature of our source water in so many ways benefits us, but this is one area. Because disinfection byproducts, the chemicals react with the organic. So kind of the heavier the organic load of, that goes on your system and ultimately goes through, does drive the formation of these disinfection byproducts. And our water quality is very high and the organic is relatively low compared to many others. So again, that's another kind of way to think about it as we hear more and more about disinfection byproducts. I'm not saying it's not a long term concern, it is. And we're certainly supporting the sciences, we understand that better. But it's, I'd say we're just in a bit of a different profile than some agencies that have numbers far higher than us.
Yeah, and that's certainly true, yet as we, there are other aspects when you, when you think about disinfection byproduct. For example, our clarifiers are currently under review by FEMA for grant. Were that grant to come through, then we'd be looking at hardening those clarifiers. And that might be an opportunity for us to think about, as Ben was talking about, future changes to the disinfection by practices at the treatment plants. So would we, for example, want to be able to know how much an intermediate ozonation process might cost us? And think about how we would budget and pay for and prioritize that type of mood. But it would also need to be constructed with forethought as you rebuild these clarifiers with, with FEMA grant. You'd want to make sure that those hydraulic profiles were raised a little bit so you could accommodate another treatment process between the clarifiers and filters. So there, it's complicated, this is a short answer, but these are things that we need, we want to be able to know in case things come up. So hence the continuous sort of review of our practices and updating of technology and our knowledge as staff in terms of those technologies as well.
Pleased to hear you're thinking about pre-ozonation. I think it's, we're behind the curve on that area.
Yeah, and to Ben's comments, you know, a lot of agencies in the bay have over time changed their disinfection practices to include ozonation. For us, I think we've had comments this morning already around what's happening down in LA. There, there's a different side in terms of, you know, there's prevention of disasters. There's how you respond to disasters. And this sort of water quality after wildfires is one of those, how do we, how are we going to respond? And we've done some initial testing where we've collected, you know, ash on the watershed, mixed it up in water, run it through pilot treatment processes at the treatment plant, figured out what levels we could and couldn't treat in terms of how much ash there is. But relating that back to what happens in nature, what happens to a reservoir that's been burned, there's not a lot of information out there that you can kind of grab a hold of on a scientific basis. So we're, we're sort of scouring, looking for that information, attending seminars and events that we can to try to find that information for us. We did do some additional post filtration testing where we chlorinated that water, speaking about disinfection byproducts, to see what would happen to disinfection byproducts. We didn't really see any, if any increases in disinfection byproducts as a result of the additional carbon loading, which was very interesting to me. But what we did see was things like after you added the chlorine, a couple of days later, there was a precipitate that started to form and some color that came back into the water. And so what are those? And so we've got more work to do and that's what this is intended to help us try to get our arms wrapped around.
Sounds like you should put a paper out on that one. It, it's not surprising, I think, because the kind of elements that are the precursors to the DBP are the ones that would be burned completely, a hundred percent gone to CO2.
Interesting.
I think, and so that's, I don't know about this precipitate, I have to think about that one a little bit. Probably inorganic, but something strange is happening there.
Yeah, so we, we have more work to do in this area to really understand it and get our arms around it. The water quality lab, I think the board is aware that we're, we're looking at refocusing some of the resources in there to kind of focus outward to the distribution system, which is where our challenges lie, not just in terms of water quality, but in regulations, which is item E, there's a new cross connection control regulations that are coming out. They have completely rewritten the book on cross connection control, changed chapter and verse quite literally to its own, own section away from title 17. And we're in the process of kind of working through that. The first thing will be a submittal in July of the plan, but it's going to require another, a new ordinance for the board to adopt. And so we'll be bringing some of this information to the board as in the coming weeks and months. And I think that pretty much concludes what I've.
Paul, just a quick item on the cross connection control. Does that include backflow prevention and monitoring?
Exactly, thank you, yes, that is backflow.
It'd be great to have an update on that and how we currently manage the whole backflow process. As you know, I get a lot, I've been getting a lot of questions from one of our customers about it. It'd be great to just have an update for the board.
So Paul, the, the, the short on that is as regulations go, they don't typically decrease. It's more stringent regulations, probably more enforcement requirements on customers in terms of installation of backflow devices, testing of backflow devices. But we'll be bringing that to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just note, Ben, when I, when we discussed this a few months ago, some of the, you know, what I learned about the risks associated with cross connections in our complicated now water supply systems with sprinkler, fire, you know, fire prevent sprinklers, swimming pools, et cetera, was, was, was really, that was great to know, learn about. I think, I think a review would be, would be beneficial.
Okay.
There's an argument to have backflow devices on every single house because everybody has a direct connection into the water system. In other words, if your neighbor decided to pump poison from their house out into the main, they could do that unrestricted. Good part is it would only affect a few neighbors on either side. They couldn't pump enough to affect us overall. When my dad was with LA Water Empower, they had a question about adding LSD to the reservoir. Would that be a problem? This was back in the 60s. And how much LSD would it take to impact people? Unfortunately, it was more than LSD could, could be done. But it, it's been kicking around this whole issue of, in fact, a friend of mine named Frank Agardy wrote a book where he suggested that we actually do put a backflow device on every house, at least a check valve.
Yeah, absent that approach, water systems, as you know, Director Russell, are fairly protected in that we maintain systems under pressure. So it's not easy, of course, someone could do it, but it's not easy to overcome the pressure and get stuff in the system. So the easier way in theory would be you just put it directly in the reservoir. But right, what studies have shown is the tankers it would take would likely, in our case, be very visible. So we do, we don't have, you know, remote reservoirs where six trucks backing up dumping in would go necessarily unnoticed. But yeah, this has been periodically, it does get kicked around of how do we ensure integrity and protection of our system? And in fact, built into our infrastructure assessment, one area is security, where we're looking at developing standards for tanks and pump stations and where do we have potential gaps? You often look for kind of three barriers of entry, you know, a fence, alarm system, locked door, that sort of thing. So we'll be bringing that as well to the board as we work on that effort.
Great. And Paul, thank you for that piece. And any other board comments for, or questions for Paul? I, I do want to continue to put the pressure on the landscape design piece as part of the conservation, excuse me. Because we do have this really big motivational process right now, which is going to be the insurance industry forcing people to do this. And if we can partner for the water safe landscape, I think conservation efforts can be accelerated because that's the biggest draw. So thank you for your effort on that. Do we have any public comment on this section?
There are, there are none.
Thank you. Mimi Willard from the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. AMI should not be a 2025 priority for further expenditures or use of staff time or consultants on planning. One of the things that has been revealed to us or made, made clear because it was not being withheld, but one of the things that's become clear in recent months is that there's not enough money here to expand our water supply to the level that, that the community wants. And there, similarly, there's not enough money here to disaster proof our water supply to the optimal degree, which also would be expensive. I think that those projects, because they are the most important to the, to the community and for the long term, should be fully planned and fully funded before diverting dollars to other uses. I think that the situation in Los Angeles is a wake up call to rethink the priorities and concentrate the expenditures on the most important aspects of them. Thank you.
Terry, any other further public comment?
There are none.
Okay, great, we'll go ahead and move on to goal number two.
Good morning, Alex and I, Engineering Director. So today I'll be walking us through the resilient water system, which is really taking an in-depth look at the district's infrastructure to really determine how we could make this a better and more resilient system throughout, by better management and planning. So this goal has six different objectives we're going to be going over today, including the infrastructure condition assessment, which is information that really is used to set the foundation that feeds into the second objective of the capital planning effort. Where we'll use that information to determine and prioritize projects into the future leading into the capital project delivery, which is the execution for either rehabilitation or reconstruction and maintenance of our infrastructure. Along with this goal, we also have a component of the operations and maintenance, which is ensuring that we have properly trained staff and having the resources to maintain and operate our system as we move forward. And energy planning, which is always taken into consideration, energy efficiency improvements that we could incorporate to any of the rehab projects coming out of the infrastructure condition assessment. And then finally, kind of wrapping up around the emergency response and readiness, which I think it's on everyone's mind today, which we'll get into with the sixth objective today. So for objective one, infrastructure condition assessment, it's really, you know, allowing the district to take a really risk assessment approach to processing and, and prioritizing investments into our replacement and rehabilitation projects as we move forward with the increased capital program. So of the, of the eight subcategories here, staff will be focusing on seven of them. First being the completion of the above ground condition assessment of our pump stations and tanks, which we'll be prioritizing, reviewing for, you know, greater transparency and robustness, the prioritization process from pipeline projects, which includes looking at, you know, assessing the age, risk, probability and consequence of failures that, you know, we need to look at when we consider prioritization of pipelines. Performing a condition assessment on the larger, oh, item C is the one we're going to not be focusing on this year. But going on to D is completing the facilities master plan, which is really an objective to look at our administration building, warehouse, corp yard and watershed facilities to see where there's opportunities for improvements and prioritizing, prioritization into the CIP. And also identifying above ground infrastructure hardening needs for better protection against wildfire. And the reviewing industry standard security measures across our infrastructure to see where we can have opportunities to improve. And then finally wrapping up with really completing a really comprehensive water system master plan, which we're going to be utilizing to really identify the prioritization of the various infrastructure that we're going to be looking at. of the various infrastructure that we're going to be looking at.
So Alex, we're bringing the, an update on the water system master plan Friday?
This Friday. So we'll, yeah, I was going to talk about on the next slide, but yes, we are going to be bringing, and I'll get a little bit more into this next slide, so. So first, kind of starting off with the above-ground facilities assessment. It's, it's really the initial step in identifying where, you know, the state of our existing infrastructure is at and what is needed to make improvements, because a lot of the infrastructure we have is, is pretty old. We are one of, we're the first water agency in the state of California, so there's a lot of infrastructure we maintain. So really doing a really comprehensive assessment and then also leveraging a consultant team to see where there's still deficiencies in our pump stations as far as electrical, to really prioritize what, you know, those rehab or reconstruction projects may look like. And then focusing that into the capital planning effort.
Alex, just a quick question on that. Would that incorporate emergency power generators into the same pump systems?
That is correct. We're looking at the entire footprint of pump stations to see, you know, fire hardening, electrical, safety for arc flash protection, redundancy as far as capabilities to hook up generators for continued pumping. We're looking, we're taking all those things into consideration when we're looking at and assessing the pump stations.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the pipeline prioritization is, you know, something we're going to be bringing back to the board in conjunction with the water system master plan this Friday to talk about how we're going to prioritize, you know, and looking at existing pipelines and how we're going to prioritize those going into the future. Looking at completing the workplace master plan, which again, like I mentioned before, is really taking a really in-depth look at our building and infrastructure and determining what is needed to be incorporated into the capital budget. And item E, which is the above-ground infrastructure hardening, which is, I'm really happy to kind of report and staff did bring to the operations committee last month the findings of that effort that was completed by staff. And all the findings were done in coordination with the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. So it was really a collaborative effort to provide a comprehensive analysis and approach to the evaluation of our pump stations and our spillways. And all that information is going to be fed into objective A, which is looking at the overall big above-ground utilities, above-ground infrastructure assessment, which we use to prioritize the projects as we move forward. And item G, which is the water system security measures, has been kind of talked to, is really kind of taking a look at all our infrastructure for any additional improvements that we could incorporate, feeding into the assessment that we'll use to prioritize. So looking at if there's possibilities to install additional security, whether they be fences or different types of materials for doors or entry or alarm systems, all that's going to be looked at incorporated into the assessment. And then finally, staff has been diligently working over this past year on the water system master plan, which is really a comprehensive look at our entire system, looking at pipes, pumps, tanks, and then really going further and eventually get, looking more in depth at our treatment plants and dams. But this is really key to helping us learn how to prioritize the work as we move forward. And staff will be bringing the item this Friday to the operations committee to really provide a real in-depth look at what we've done this past year, which is really great work that's been done. And that's really key to allowing this first objective to kind of really flourish and move forward into the next couple of ones that we have going up in this goal. So any, any questions on any of this? No? Okay. All right. So that moves us into the second objective, which is the capital planning effort. So a lot of the information that we're getting from the first objective is going to feed this one. And that's really, you know, allowing us to work closely with a capital steering committee, which is a committee that's by senior staff and mid-management staff, including operations, water resources, engineering, watershed, where we look at and finance to look at all the different projects that have been identified and really look at it in a thoughtful way to prioritize those projects as we move forward. And then also with considerations of project budgeting into the future. So we have three different subtasks identified in this one, which is to really take a really good look at the infrastructure assessment with the mindset of looking at the 10 and 30-year horizon, looking at the bigger projects that we have to work on as a district. And then also looking at grant funding opportunities that can be used to capitalize, to fund some of these projects, to kind of help with the rates for our ratepayers. And then looking at, you know, bond funding for some of these larger projects that provide a real value for the generational use of our customers as we move forward. So with the first subtask here, the developing the long-term CIP. So as I mentioned, the completion of the water system master plan was very key. That's going to help us start looking and focusing what these longer 10 and 30-year capital projects and investments could look like. And it would include anything from like in-system improvement opportunities for our transmission system, looking at how we can improve production at our treatment plant for different clarifiers or ozone, and just looking at things on a larger, big scale, you know, into the future. And I, you know, the second one for the grant funding opportunities, which really is an ongoing effort to really continue looking at grants that are available that are good fits for the projects that we do at the district. So that's always an ongoing effort that staff will continue to work on. And then item C for the bond funding will be something that's going to be better captured in goal four at the future presentation of the five-year strategic plan. Any, any questions?
Yeah, Alex, thanks. Thanks for the update. Really appreciate it. You know, we've really understood, I think, the importance of prioritizing capital planning, capital investments for a while now. And I know with the new, with the new rate structure, you know, we brought in, you know, we really dedicated resources for that. I think we've had, you know, some regular, in your regular updates, discussions about how to balance, you know, you know, well, just the challenge of balancing all that work across, you know, limited staff and certainly you've done a good job on building up staff to try to meet the more ambitious objectives. But it's, I think it's, I still don't have a good sense of how well we're doing in terms of hitting our actual goals. And I know this, part of that is still being established through the water system master plan. But we used to get these, and I think Alicia used to present these graphs that would show us sort of like what the optimum replacement or maintenance timeline would be for different types of infrastructure. It would be tanks, it would be pipelines. And you would show the trajectory that we were on and then what we would like to be at. So I guess this is a long-winded request to ask for an update to see how much we've improved in, from where we were to where we would like to be with respect to maintenance.
That is a great question, Director Kush, which is something that's going to be incorporated in this Friday's presentation with the water system master plan. So those curves, the Lenesi curves that you're referring to about the different investment rates and where we are, those are going to be something, they're going to be part of the presentation. So those will be shared this Friday.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to the capital project delivery, which is kind of the culmination of all the work done by the first two objectives, you know, infrastructure assessment, prioritization, and then delivery, really just kind of focusing on, you know, using the existing staff and, you know, leveraging and maximizing the use of consultants to really execute the entire capital program as we move forward. And we have a series of, you know, six different, you know, subtasks in this, in this objective, which we're going to be working on, which is first doing the assessment of staff resources, which Director Kush kind of touched on right now. Establishing on-call contracts for construction purposes that we could utilize to leverage for projects that are a little bit too big for our staff, but too small for a conventional design bid build project, as well as executing on-call contracts with professional engineering firms to address civil and geotechnical and electrical, which is something we're working on. Reviewing and updating the necessary sections of our different, of our district's standards to most current industry standards, because things evolve over time with technologies and materials and equipment. So that's all kinds of information that we need to be considerate of to include. And, you know, really looking at continuing to work with local municipalities on a really comprehensive paving approach that really would benefit the district as how we move forward with repairs and, and projects that we move into, into the future. So as far as resource needs, this is one that's, I'm kind of also happy to report that we have done, staff has done a really comprehensive job at looking at our existing resourcing, leveraging the conversion of various positions within the engineering department to bring in more inspectors and engineers and environmental planners, as well as obtaining the support from the board on creating four new full-time positions that are really needed to really help manage the workload as we move forward. And, you know, while this initial assessment has been completed, it's also an ongoing evaluation, looking every year as a workload continues, as is there any additional needs for additional staff or leveraging consultant teams to help execute the workload as we move forward. So that's something that really looking at and keeping a close eye on as we move forward with the capital program. On-call contracts for small repairs is one that also we executed, or staff executed this last year, which has proven to be quite beneficial to the district. We have been able to do five smaller projects that would likewise take more time and additional planning efforts. So we were able to execute more work on a smaller scale to kind of make sure that our system is maintained and operating properly. One of the projects that we did do under this contract was the Loma Alta landslide bypass. There was a landslide out there on Glen Fire Road. So we were able to bypass that ensuring integrity of our transmission system from the San Geronimo Treatment Plant. So that's now repaired with the risk of that failing being eliminated. Just something like, you know, those types of projects have been done under this construction contract. For the on-call engineering contracts, staff have executed on-call geotech compaction contracts with various firms to help out with the construction of our projects and compaction testing. And staff recently came back to the board also for the award or award, or will be coming back to the board for the award of on-call geotech and engineering work for foundation for pump stations and tanks, as well as geotechnical exploration work for our preliminary design reports that are needed for planning purposes. So those have been completed, but again, as we move forward, we'll be looking to continue these various construction and on-call engineering contracts as we move forward into the future. The district specifications is something that we're going to be really taking a dive into here in the third quarter of this year and start really updating our specs as we move forward, especially as the workload is going to start to increase over the next couple of years with the increased CIP. And the paving restoration, which is something that we are going to be starting to work with our neighboring agencies here. We have a meeting scheduled with Mill Valley here in February to kind of start the conversation and then really gauge interest at what, before we go and approach other jurisdictions like the county or the city of San Rafael, to really start talking about how we manage paving restoration as we go into the future.
Yep. Excuse me, Alex, on the paving piece, I feel like this has been the ongoing topic now for a couple of years. Your predecessor, Crystal, was working on this too. So it'd be good to see actual progress on this this year because we're in a three-year commitment now to something that was a really big issue three years ago. So it'd be nice to see some closure on that or some progress.
Yeah, I think we're doing really good headway right now, now that we're going to start those conversations with the municipality. So we'll, we'll have more information to present to the board in the future.
Yeah, Alex, I just wanted to share just my thoughts on the balancing so the board appreciates in terms of consultant support for the engineering work. And the balance is really, you know, if you find yourself, you're consulting too much. And what I mean by that is where you aren't doing the design work yourself, you can find yourself in an organization where you don't have the skills, the knowledge to even effectively manage the consultants. And then the other issue is if all you do are the small, easy stuff yourself and you contract out for design all the cool projects, so to speak, you know, your attract and retain engineers gets potentially impacted. So it really is a balance. And as Alex said, you know, continually him and his team looking at it, how do we strike that right balance? Keep some cool projects in-house, but ensure and develop skills of internal staff, but ensure we're leveraging outside support sufficient to get the work done. Ongoing balance.
I just want to add a little shout out on that topic. You noted just briefly, Alex, the work to address the landslide on Loma Alta, which could have severely compromised our water supply.
Yeah.
And, you know, I go by there every so often. And that was, that was a pretty scary landslide there affecting one of our mains coming from San Geronimo Treatment Plant. And none of us who rely on the supply actually knew about or noticed that there was almost a really big problem there. So just the ability to respond to that type of thing and keep the water flowing. I hope it's nothing, it's not something, you know, that we, our customers take for granted. It's a lot of effort.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so. Onto our fourth objective, which has to do with the operations and maintenance of our system and really just ensuring that district staff maintain the knowledge and skill sets to effectively manage and, and work and maintain our systems. So this, this objective is comprised of five different subtasks, which is, you know, in recognition of the significant turnover in operations, which is mostly due to retirements and promotional opportunities within the organization. It's really trying to focus and develop a training plan to ensure that, you know, staff do, do have the skill sets necessary to maintain the system. And then establishing standard operating procedures and training to transfer that institutional knowledge to all staff that are more junior in the organization. And also encouraging staff involvement in industry associations and providing learning opportunities and engagement with others within the organization of the work that they do. And further reviewing the organizational structure of operations for classification to see that if there's effective, you know, maybe sometimes reclassifications or reprioritization of workload to be more efficient with how we execute the work. And then identifying opportunities to implement technology or technological investments or advancements in equipment to better provide a more streamlined, more efficient work, workload as we move forward.
So this is, in a way, kind of the one slide focused on the O and M area of our organization. That, again, just to say it, it does nothing to reflect the body of work, right? It's just where are there opportunities for continued improvement, engagement of the staff, development of the staff, and ensuring the work that's done day to day is done as best as possible in terms of efficiency and effectiveness. So, and I'd say overall, with all the movement there, there's really a high degree of energy and enthusiasm. And it's really an opportunity that Darren's taking him and his leadership team over in operations to build on that engagement, to ensure that we have the right documentation in terms of SOPs and in training and, you know, kind of build on the opportunity that we have in front of us.
All right. And kind of going into what this year two work plan is going to look like, we'd be looking for formalizing and training to ensure the new and current employees receive consistent training within their departments, which will be an ongoing effort. Standard operating procedures, we'll be looking to review and update or develop five to 10 new SOPs this year, which we're looking to complete by the end of Q4 or '25. Continue developing the pipe tapping team so they could participate in the regional competitions. And it's just, it's a kind of a work in progress that we are working on as well as providing opportunities for staff to engage and attend industry conferences throughout the organization.
So we didn't put as a milestone to win regionals, so we go to state. That's the unstated goal that we have, but we'll hit it over the years to come.
Work in progress. We'll get to that point. And then also for the operational organizational structure reviews, consistently reviewing, you know, the work that staff do to see if there's any efficiencies that can be done, which is part of an ongoing effort. And then finally, looking at, continuing to engage staff to develop a list of equipment and practices to improve efficiencies and safety and effectiveness throughout the operations and maintenance group, which is part of an ongoing effort. So, and any questions?
Can you explain what the pipe tapping team is?
It's a very.
Darren, do you want to go ahead and?
I love the name.
Yeah, thank you, Darren Machado, Operations Director. Yeah, the pipe tapping team is a team that practices twice a week right now for the district, but they compete at. that practices twice a week right now for the district, but they compete at regional conferences against other teams, but you're actually, there's a pressurized pipeline and you're actually making a tap for a service. So it's a, it's a, it's a pretty random, so you can Google it and pull up different different examples or videos to watch, but in order to make like the regional or even nationals, you have to qualify. So I believe the next opportunity for us to compete is going to be in March in Burlingame at an operator symposium. But yeah, there's some, there's some good
The competitions you feel like you're watching when they change tires in a NASCAR race, if you've ever seen that, that's what it's like. I mean, it is the ones that have developed over the years are so quick and coordinated. It's really impressive to watch and it's a fun thing for the crew to do and folks to cheer them on and that sort of thing.
So the question is, do they have uniforms? And if so, can we get some swag here?
And I'm assuming the points just to keep up their agility with?
No, I'd say that the real opportunity is a path, a direct path to engage in the industry and meet your peers and you're at the conference, you're walking around the trade floor show and talking to vendors. Hopefully, you know, you go to a talk or two and you benefit from someone else's experience doing the same thing you're doing, coming back with ideas and part of it is just appreciating the richness of the industry we work in. And the understanding that not every agency has to recreate every wheel and benefit from the networks that are out there. And so that's part of the broader strategy, but this is the avenue really for the O and M group to really tap into it.
Thank you.
No pun intended.
Yeah.
No pun intended.
Understand what Darren is talking about is called a hot tap, which means exactly that, that it's under full pressure. There's no way to get rid of the water. You have to drill a hole in the pipe, insert a fitting and close a valve by pulling the drill back through the valve. This is a pretty tricky operation and I would say it does improve skill in that sense, but Ben's correct. The real goal is to get people there, the operators there giving a pathway that the white collar folks have already. It's, if you attend an American Waterworks meeting, the next one's in Denver, it's a very well-attended event. I would say that it draws a minimum of 500 people in the crowd watching it at any given time. Part of it's regional, you know, that they're, they're backing their, their home folks, but it's a really good thing. And and, and as Ben said, I would have used Indianapolis as the example of the NASCAR, but it is like one of those tire changes. It is very tricky. Especially you can't have leaks, you know, you don't want the thing to blow out, which it can do, spray your face. So there's a lot of things that can happen that are not so good.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, thank you. Onto object number five, which is our energy planning objectives. So this, this objective is really to seek opportunities to help reduce our carbon footprint throughout the district and also look at what energy-saving opportunities we do have as we rehab some of these pump station projects move forward. So within this objective, we do have five different subtasks we're going to be focusing on, which will be the first one to really look at our fleet and looking at how we could, you know, really exceed or meet the, you know, industry regulations on fleet vehicles as we move forward with all the regulatory changes, as well as looking at including new electrical vehicle charging stations at the administration building and within the operations at the warehouse, op center, and also at Sky Oaks Ranger Station to meet the needs of EV charging stations throughout the organization. Evaluating the pump station rehab projects to determine visibility for, you know, supplemental clean energy like solar as we move through the condition assessment process. And really engaging the board at a future date for talking about a policy around carbon neutrality and really kind of establish goals and directions for the organization as we move forward. And then also looking at to review the application of microturbine technology and pump storage, which we'll get into in the next slides, and evaluating renewable power opportunities throughout the organization.
Alex, just on the renewable power opportunities, haven't we already determined some real possibilities at the San Geronimo?
Yes.
We're starting, okay.
That's what'll be my next slide. Yeah.
I should look at my slides.
Alex, well, it's on my mind. I had a great meeting with our, our current executive at Marin County, Derek Johnson is fantastic. And he's doing a strategic plan that I think is looking at our, our example here, which is great. So well done. When he was at San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara, he was able to develop a methane plant to help fuel all their electric vehicles. It was a massive partnership with sanitary districts and with using waste and compost. And we might have an opportunity out in West Marin to partner with them, especially given its location. So I don't know if we've ever looked into that, but I think it might be worth it and he could give you some good insights.
We'll be glad to get his information to kind of reach out and learn more about that. So.
CMSA already has a facility.
Okay. All right. So for the fleet regulatory compliance, staff is currently in the process of issuing a request for proposals from an engineering firm to hire to actually design and develop EV charging stations at the admin building, corp yard and Sky Oaks Ranger Station. So we're looking to begin that this quarter.
What one, if I could, Alex, one outstanding thing that's going to be interesting to watch is how the state and beyond, how do we deal with heavy equipment? So it's uncertain. Is that going to be hydrogen? What is that going to be? I'm talking, you know, heavy equipment like dozers and the like. So and that's, you know, not a trivial amount of our fleet in terms of heavy equipment. So it's still uncertain and the regs are pushing. But yeah, everyone's struggling with that. That'll unfold probably in the next year or two of what really, what we're, where's the industry going to go?
Two follow-ups on that. One would be, is there an option or a possibility to get into the study, public charging stations? You know, net cost, net zero cost to us. So if it up at the watershed, if we have putting in infrastructure for our own vehicles, how much would it cost to run to the public parking and then charge for wherever we make our money?
Public charging.
Potentially. And then the other part would be, is there an opportunity to look at some, some of the heavy tools that we're using that would become battery powered as opposed to gas or things like that? You're starting to see a lot of technological advances to the electrical component of that, which reduces a lot of our use too.
Thank you very much for that. Second, pump station evaluation. It's really looking at integrating solar opportunities with our pump stations. And that kind of rolls into our condition assessment, part of objective one A, that we'll be looking as we move forward with this. And then as far as the carbon neutrality, we're looking to really initiate a conversation with the board, starting in the fourth quarter to really start, starting that discussion and learning more about what goals and priorities we want to look at as we move forward as an organization as far as carbon neutrality goes. As far as microturbine technology, Director Kushi touched on that. Staff did bring back an item to the board back in July to kind of find the presentations of the end-up analysis. We did look at our, our distribution system and where microturbines would fit. Unfortunately, it was one of those that wasn't really a good fit for our organization and our system. And then also looking at pump storage was also looked at and evaluated, which didn't really lend itself to be a real beneficial return on investment for our organization. But as part of that review, kind of going into number E for the renewable power source, the San Geronimo Treatment Plant was actually, it did kind of float up to the top as a good option for solar out our clear wells, because San Geronimo Treatment Plant used about 25% of our electricity. And the solar offset would kind of cut that by around 10%, which is a good option, which staff are currently looking at to issue a proposal to do a real end-up structural analysis of the clear wells to support the load of solar. So we're in the process of executing or getting that out, which actually it is out. We'll be getting it back here next month to evaluate and coming back to the board to award and a contract to do that work and get moving on that. So staffers taking steps to, to move kind of in the right direction as far as carbon neutrality.
On the San Geronimo Treatment Plant, we still don't know if it's going to be feasible to work with, use the clear wells.
This, this is what we're going to be doing is doing it to make sure that they're structurally sound.
Right.
So we can put the, the solar panels on top of the clear wells.
If they're not, it would be good to know if there are, you know, an additional set of options that we can then pivot towards just in case that, that one doesn't come through. I think on the, on the carbon neutrality topic, Alex, in the past, we've noted it would be helpful to have, you know, as we move into those discussions, it would be helpful to have an understanding of where we currently sit with respect to reliance on green, you know, on fossil fuels versus renewable energy, just what our current carbon footprint is to some. I know it's not going to be maybe the most refined estimate. That could be something we get, get, decide to do later, but to have some understanding of where we currently are.
That is a great question. Right now, I think for the past 10 years or so, the district has gone over to Marin Clean Energy, 100% deep grain, which is all renewable energy for our use and consumption. So that's a step in the right direction. And I think we're kind of, you know, we're doing the right things and trying to be ahead of the curve. But there's also opportunities that we could evaluate as we kind of get into this, at where we can make those adjustments like Director Director Sampson said about our heavy equipment tools and how we can convert those from gas to power. So we could still do some refinements, which is something we're going to be looking at as we move forward. But I think the district as a whole is really in a good place as far as our consumption and being thoughtful and being green and reducing our carbon footprint with our current operations. Okay. Any other questions? All right.
I have one more comment.
Sure.
I think if we're looking at EV chargers, we should be looking at level threes. Having had EV cars for 10 years, a level three is a 20-minute adventure instead of 20 hours. So, you know, it's a huge difference. Those are 460 volt chargers.
Like the Tesla supercharger stations that go.
Essentially, essentially, yes. It makes all the difference in the world in terms of charging the car. You're 80% in 15 minutes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that with the, with the analysis we're going to be doing with the consultant to look at all those options.
Especially the ones that are at the general office building.
Yeah.
Because there you've got the 460 available, whether we actually use it or not, it's available. And these are all 460s. Could be done with the transformer too. Transformer.
That's good to know. Thank you. Okay. And then kind of rounding up to our last objective, which is emergency response and readiness. This is really kind of geared to prepare staff to be able to respond and maintain and operate our system through fires, floods, earthquakes, or any other catastrophe that can happen. And then allowing us to recover in as quick a manner as possible. So this objective, there's six different subtasks we're going to be looking at this year and working on. So updating the district's emergency response plan to reflect the current needs and priorities. We'll be conducting a minimum of two tabletop exercises this next year in collaboration with Emergency Operations Center to kind of get that hands-on training and experience and be able to react in the future. Conducting our yearly dam emergency action plan reviews on our seven dams, as well as in coordinating with the Marin County Office of Emergency Management to train everyone, district staff and external stakeholders to be able to respond to emergencies and participating in our regular monthly meetings and with the OEM here in Marin County. And then also looking at establishing FEMA compliant contracts for both engineering and construction services to really implement and execute after the emergency happens. So we're ready to go and be compliant for Freeman reimbursement in the future. And then also continue to assess and identify opportunities to reduce the risk throughout the district and our, and our infrastructure. So to kind of go a little bit more in depth here. So for the emergency response, we're looking to update our employee notification system as it pertains to the response and the expectations to what we do before, during and after an emergency. So we're looking to have that completed by the third quarter of this year. Looking at doing some training to and designating roles to our Emergency Operations Center and the Incident Command System to really conduct activation drills. So that way staff have an opportunity to experience what it's like to kind of go through one of these simulations. So we're better prepared when something really does happen and we're able to activate. And as far as the seven dams, I'm also glad to kind of report that the California Office of Emergency CalOES, sorry, has reviewed and approved all seven dam EAPs. So now going forward is a process of just doing yearly reviews of the contact information to make sure that the folks on those contact lists are current. And then having every five years, having like a really big tabletop exercise with the state and local emergency agencies and the district staff to really implement what it would look like if there was a dam event. And then continue, continue participating in the county's Office of Emergent Management on a monthly basis, which is part of an ongoing task that all staff are, that safety staff are doing. And then finally, not finally, but also rounding out the finalizing the development of the FEMA compliant contracts, which we'll be looking to complete this first quarter, hopefully early February, so we could get those implemented and be able to use when an emergency happens. And then rounding out with the water system, single points of failure assessment, which includes the fire hardening and security measures, which really is a component of the, you know, infrastructure assessment, which is part of goal one, objective A. So all that's going to be considered and roped into that first objective of this goal two, the resilient water system. And we're looking to begin that in the third quarter of this year as we kind of get moving forward with the information from the water system master plan. Any questions?
Are there consultants that specialize in that FEMA contract prep? That's something I've heard anybody talk about.
I'm sure there's probably some consultant teams that do have that experience.
FEMA's got a guidebook too.
Yes.
Walk the way through. They, they're pretty clear.
And we do have
No. They reject like 50% or more of the applications.
It's about a six-inch guidebook. Yeah, it's a pretty brutal process.
Says, just say no, right?
And then the second page says, if you haven't said no, say no.
Yeah. Keep that to picture.
Well, we do have staff and engineering who have kind of experience and worked in Santa Rosa during the fires. So they do have hands-on experience with writing those contracts and developing. So that's, they're going to be key to getting this, these contracts done. And so that's, we're kind of grateful to have them on board.
I think the other thing is we really need to think about what happened in LA. I've been asking a lot of questions about why hadn't it happened before? And because it's the same situation, it's been that way for 150 years. And the only answer that I've heard that made sense so far is that normally it rains in January. And it hasn't rained since May in LA. So that they had the worst possible combination. They had a lot of rain last year, no rain this year. And the reason I bring it up is while we all think oh, it's really unfortunate what happened to them. You know, those pictures are the same as Santa Rosa. Basically.
Same as paradise too.
Burned out completely.
Same as paradise.
Yeah. And, and they were talking, the fire guys were talking, you know, that they have 14,000 fire engines there now. And they need 26,000, but there aren't 26,000 in California. Total, not available. They're just not here. So, you know, that is, is an issue. How do you stop something like this? I mean, look at, right now they're 30% contained in LA. I mean, you know, we need to think about seriously, I think where I live, for instance, is on the water down the hill. And you think, okay, how could it get to us? You know, well, it comes down from Ring Mountain and it burns on its way down. And then it just overwhelms the fire people, right? They do their best, but they just can't. And, you know, we need something kind of like they did in San Francisco with the 06 earthquake where they started blowing up blocks to make fire breaks, just destroyed a block of good houses to stop the fire. You know, maybe we need a little more radical thinking in terms of what would you do if it started marching forward? Because, you know, while it takes us to have an onshore wind to probably cause the most damage.
Offshore. Offshore.
Onshore, right? Would bring it down the hill towards where I am at least. It would take onshore, which is probably not very likely. It blows that way, but it's not going to prevail for, you know, 40 hours like they're getting in LA. So, you know, but I think it's time to rethink this whole issue of what do you do if?
Any other comments? Okay. I think this should be a pretty big focus of what we're talking about and to reinforce what Director Russell is saying that this is in our backyard, this will eventually happen here. And if we continue to act like it won't, we'll have to answer the same questions that the folks down in Los Angeles are doing. And I think while our responsibility is our watershed, our ability to purvey water and making sure that's sustainable, we also have a duty as a we also have a duty as a neighbor for these adjoining communities to work hand in hand as we start reducing some of these wildfire risks for that. And I think it's for us, you know, we can look at this six ways from Sunday. And I think we'll get a little bit more discussion in the watershed goal following this. But for me, item F with the single points of failure really scares me. And I think I'm glad we don't have all of our eggs in one basket. But, you know, it wasn't that long ago where the pipeline from Sonoma was shut down due to earth movement, it was deflected. And I was really glad we weren't North Marin Water. I was really glad it was winter time. But these types of things, I mean, how many lines come out of Kent reservoir that go into San Geronimo Treatment? If anything happens like it did at La Malta, I mean, we've got really big problems. It's going to be really hard to look at. And I think the single point of failure piece should be a critical component of the valuation for the water supply projects. We should be providing resiliency over and over again as part of that. Because if we don't, and an event happens, which will eventually happen, we're going to be stuck with how do we get our water? And if we don't have a backup plan or some resiliency built in, I think we're going to be in a really bad spot. I envy Department of Water and Power in Los Angeles right now because they have a lot more questions. They're going to be throwing them than answers. But my guess is there's some infrastructure issues that we probably face here that will lead us to the exact same result that they're dealing with right now. And I think their ability to build up our resiliency around our infrastructure in terms of the home, the hardening piece is a really critical first step. And again, I applaud staff for making that a priority and moving it forward because there are not going to be enough firefighters to defend these things. And that's what we're seeing in urban conflagration like we see in Pacific Palisades right now. It's going to overwhelm the effect of firefighting response. It's just not going to be there. I mean, the winds on Tuesday night were recorded 100 miles an hour. I watched a video of a fire engine's door being blown off and reports of spot fires due to ember casting over five miles away. It's just not in the cards to stop that. So what we're left with is hardening our infrastructure so that should the fire blow through, we're hoping that most of it remains protected due to engineering measures. And that's where we really have to drive with and not just engineering measures, but it'll operate without the assistance of humans, either backup power remotely operated through a SCADA system. So these types of things have to be part of our thought process at all times. Because if we don't, we're going to be 20, 30 years down the road with an infrastructure that doesn't make sense to be able to support that. And looking at Mount Tam every day, I would say most of Marin County is starting to picture overlay of what happened down south in Los Angeles here in this county and what it could potentially look like, which is not the way we should be living, but it's definitely a good motivation to continue thinking the way we are thinking. So this is at the forefront for all of this as we move forward. Because we are sitting on a ticking time bomb that should it occur, and there's going to be a lot of rebuilding that's going to take way past our lifetime to be able to make sense. I mean, Pacific Palisades won't be rebuilt to anyone's satisfaction within a decade, 15 years. I mean, it's just way too much stuff. And not to mention, we're going to be talking about insurance at some point here too, and how the water district lands can help inform the insurance renewal or rate setting process, which is another piece of the puzzle for us with that. On the EOC disaster piece, there are consultants that will come in and help run EOC drills, if that makes sense. If we don't have, we don't feel comfortable enough in householding them or the county can't support it at that level, there are folks that can come in and hold our hands and walk us through the first few so we get our hands on it. So I definitely support that looking out if you need to.
Yeah, I think our safety manager is considering those options as necessary. So, yeah.
Excellent. Appreciate that. And again, this is, this is a big priority for us. It should be informing all the decisions or at least have a component of all the decision-making process we're moving forward on. So thank you for that.
I think, I agree completely with your comments. I think that from the people like Brad Sherman at Sonoma Water, when Brad woke up, there was fire on his driveway. That's what, when he woke up and they proceeded to leave. But that's how close it got to total, his house completely burned down. But they got out. Five more minutes, maybe not. And in my tenure on the board, the single most interesting and most important event I went to was a seminar put on between the fire department and us. It was held on a Saturday and I think it is absolutely essential to rehold it. The timing is perfect. And what it was about is taking care of yourself, basically. The defensible zone, they showed a series of pictures in Mill Valley of a house that was at the interface of the wooie. And they showed this house when it was built. Five years later, five years later, five years later, today. And as they said, we can't, if you let that happen, we can't get to you. The fire truck can't get there fast enough to put the fire out, regardless of whether they have water or they don't have water. They just can't move that quickly. And so you, the homeowner has to take that first level of defense to clear that space off around the house so that you have a chance. The second thing I think we need to really start pounding on is these vent issues of the Vulcan type vent systems. I just ordered them for my house and we'll be installing them shortly. But this thing, you see these houses, two minutes, they're fully engulfed. And that's how much time you got, a minute, two minutes, five minutes. If you don't do the defense, and maybe those even if you did the defense, because they're talking about the house next door setting the house on fire, which, you know, when they're close, it probably doesn't make any difference whether they got bushes or not. It's going to burn because the other one's burning. But there are things that can be done and I think we should, I don't remember who hosted it. It was the fire people were the primary hosts, but it was an absolutely extraordinary event. And like I say, they had, I'm sure whoever did it, we can track them back and they've still got the pictures. And it's probably worse today than it was five years or 10 years ago, whenever this event occurred. But it was something that I found, as I said, to be the most interesting event I ever went to in the, as a water district rep.
Any other board comments? Any other comments from the public?
Yes, Larry Menakis, please.
That's actually, this is actually a perfect segue to what I have written down. So I want to emphasize the importance of prioritizing transmission pipeline sizing in our planning. As we are currently witnessing in Los Angeles, capacity is a critical factor in wildland urban firefighting, particularly under extreme conditions of high winds and drought. While these conditions are not new to us, the scale and intensity we are experiencing today represent unprecedented challenges. In the event of a wildfire, a significant drawdown of available water supply is highly likely. This risk is amplified during an extended drought, precisely the conditions under which catastrophic wildfires are most likely to occur. We must prepare for this eventuality as it is not of a question of if, but when, as Director Sampson was just saying. Having additional capacity during critical situations will prove to be a prudent investment. What we are witnessing in real time underscores the necessity of infrastructure planning that anticipates and mitigates disaster scenarios. This is not just about responding to current needs, but preparing to safeguard our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other further public comment?
There are none.
Okay.
I have one more quick comment. One of the unfortunate things that has happened in the water business is that the water system is used for firefighting. What that means is that mains and things are all oversized in order to make them suitable for fire, produce the flows. What that also means is things like water age increase. In talking to Marty Adams from DWP, he correctly observed that the problem with these, like the 117 million gallon reservoir in Pacific Palisades that was empty. The problem with large reservoirs like that is the water stays in the reservoir too long. I did a job for East Bay Mud a few years ago on the problems of chloramination in large reservoirs, tanks where the ammonia comes out and you get nitrification. So you form nitrates from the bacteria eating the chlorine. And so you get this catch 22. You know, the logical says, oh, just put more reservoirs, more tanks. But that doesn't work because you've got to circulate the tanks out. And that's what Marty was talking about, that it's just an impossible situation. You know, you're caught in a catch 22. With one thing I think we should think about, and I pushed this before on the purple pipe issues, is having a separate system for fire. I know it's big dollars, but get the two separated so that you put in mains to run fire hydrants and use reclaimed water to do that. It could be empty, it could be salt water, it could be anything. But the idea is a change in thinking where it's so convenient that we just put a fire hydrant because it's, there's the waters right there, just tap it, take it. But I think that that thinking is kind of like the uncoated wires in the electrical system. You know, they followed the telegraph and they just said, oh, well, the pole's already there, just put the wire up there. Telegraph wires are uninsulated. Why can't the power wires be uninsulated? Well, it's not a good engineering decision that was made. And this idea of putting the two together is not a good solution to the problem. It's effective solution, quick, but not a good long-term solution.
And that was part of the solution package San Francisco put together coming out of 06, a separate water system. And I was glad to see there are purple hydrants along Smith Ranch Road and Lucas Valley Road. So that's a good model to continue.
Where the water is.
Where the water is, yeah, the recycled water. Okay, if there's no further comments or questions, we'll go ahead and take a quick 15 minute break and roll into lunch and our working lunch.
Okay, we're going to, if it works for everyone, start rolling into our lunchtime session. Before we did, just wanted to, you know, share just a reflection on the morning. Appreciate the engagement with the board and some good feedback and comments that we'll integrate. What we want, of course, by the end of today is really getting as close as we can to alignment. So alignment with the staff and the board. And part of what I mean by that is as we go through the goals and think about them, are there other issues kind of in the back of your mind? Are there other needs, other opportunities that you don't see reflected? Because what, right, the theory of this is we will have a work plan for 2025 that meets kind of the 80/20 rule, so to speak. Like our goal is to accomplish, we want to stretch ourselves and we believe we did in the development of these work plans. So meeting in an 80% range, you know, is reasonable and staff has appreciated the board as we've brought updates, recognizing we've got to some and not others. But back to alignment, we'd like at the end of this to be able to, if we're midway into 2025 and the board has an initiative, an idea for us to move into that wasn't discussed here, we would have a discussion of, okay, do we want to hold that off until the 2026 work plan and talk about it, how it fits in the priorities? Or do we want to bring that to a board meeting and talk about, okay, maybe what won't get done, that'll take the place of X initiative and be able to have those sorts of conversations with the board as the year comes. But I'm saying this just kind of reminder of the goal of alignment of the specific goals and the specific work plans and specific activities in terms of the body of work this coming year. So that's where we'll try and get to. So our lunchtime session, as you know, is looking at our committees and I'll hand that over to Adrian.
Ben, before we do that, can I just make one comment?
Yes.
Thanks a lot for that clarification. But if I could just add, there are some topics where, you know, we, we're still in learning mode. And so there, you know, for example, water budget based rate setting.
Right.
Not saying that that should be, you know, an initiative that we consider in the existing work plan but at least understanding how that works and how that might be applicable as just an educational exercise. There may be things like that that we can add in that are not going to detract from ongoing activity.
Yeah, absolutely. There is a natural flux and I'm not trying to suggest, you know, a rigidity, but more so an opportunity if you are thinking about something, and you brought that up and thank you for bringing it up. We've captured it along with all the comments and we'll bring it forward. If you're thinking about those sorts of things, particularly the bigger kind of resource dominating efforts or initiatives, it would be good. But hey, we know in this business, stuff is going to occur in three months and six months and nine months that hadn't been anticipated. Or someone may go to a conference and see something super interesting. So this is going to happen. And I think having a process to engage on those sorts of efforts in context of what we're doing today will just aid the kind of board staff governance of the district going forward.
Thank you for the comment and thank you for the clarification, understanding there's limited bandwidth as we move out the year and also that we are leading with a very aggressive work plan. So it's noted, thank you. And we'll go ahead and start with Adrian.
Thank you. So moving into discussion on proposed board modifications for our committee meetings. So at the regular board meeting on December 17th, the board did have a discussion on dual noticing with staff and also approved our annual board and committee meetings calendar. During those discussions of those items, some ideas on some changes to the format of our committees did come up. The board requested staff during that meeting put together some proposed modifications based on the discussion to bring here today for further discussion. And so that proposal, there's a document in front of you that outlines really three different changes that staff are proposing based on previous board input. And I'll go through those and then open the floor for a discussion. So the first proposed change to our committee's format would be renaming our operations committee to planning committee. And this would really broaden the scope of what that committee is focused on so that it can include other areas, other critical areas that currently aren't a part of that committee's focus. And that includes topics like communications and outreach and water efficiency items. The second item is do away with the standalone communications and water efficiency committee. And that wouldn't mean to do away with discussion on those topics. As I just mentioned above, they'd really be folded in where it makes sense to other committees. So for water efficiency, we'd propose to really focus those efforts into the ops or planning committee meetings. So those updates are better integrated with the overall water supply roadmap efforts and discussions. And then we would commit that water efficiency updates will still occur on at least a quarterly basis going forward under this new proposed format. And same for communications committee updates. Those would fold into various committees, not just necessarily assigned to one committee since communications and outreach does work with all departments and projects and initiative areas in the district. It would make sense, we believe, to better align those. So when those projects and initiatives are coming forward in other committees, the outreach plan and communications component of that can also go with those at the same time and just have better alignment in that way. And that includes everything from CIP projects to watershed, to water efficiency efforts. And communication updates would also still occur on at least a quarterly basis under this format. And then another note on that is it would reduce our overall number of committee meetings per year by four on the calendar. And then the final change would be move the operations committee meeting schedule from the third Friday of each month to the fourth Wednesday of each month. That is a little error on your sheet there. So meetings are currently on the third Friday and we're looking to move those to the fourth Wednesday. The reason for that would be to allow for greater participation of district staff in the meetings. A lot of our staff are on alternative work schedules where they have a regular day off on a Friday if they work a 410 or 980 schedule. And it is a work from home day for a lot of our staff that do have work from home as part of their normal schedule. And so those are the three proposed changes we have. Of course, we're open to input from the board on others and I'll open it for discussion or questions.
Great. And Adrian and Steph, thank you very much for putting some more time into revisiting this and providing us with some proposed changes. The only other proposed change that I think we discussed last time was the elimination of dual noticing of the finance administrative committee. Was that considered?
Yeah, and Molly's actually going to take the dual noticing.
Okay, so go ahead and open up the discussion to the current three proposed changes by staff here.
And President Sampson, I'm happy if you want to integrate the discussion of dual noticing with the changes in the committee or if you have questions for me, I'm also prepared to just sort of tee up a separate discussion as you, as you like. We're really not in a formal setting in that respect. And so whatever works best for the board. We're really not in a formal setting in that respect. And so whatever works best for the board.
Any requests to move forward with this independently than the dual noticing?
Well, we had set it up with the discussion on committees following by dual noticing. I believe there were comments from the board when we talked about this last that it may be useful for dual noticing to have a feel of where the board's going with the committees to inform the dual noticing discussion.
We'll go ahead and open discussion then for the three proposed changes.
Actually, can I just add one more thing? So after we get more input from you, because we have adopted the calendar for the year, we'll take that input back and make modifications to our 2025 meetings calendar and then bring that back to the board for a final discussion and then hopefully approval of the new schedule.
Okay, would that be on Tuesday? Is that too soon? And the only reason I ask, I want to make sure we don't miss anything that's currently scheduled for this week or next week or throughout the month.
We were aiming to try to do it by Tuesday. Yeah.
Good. So we'll maintain the same adopted schedule for this Friday's ops meeting as, as is right now. Great.
That's good, because we've posted the agenda for that already.
Great. Any discussion on the three proposals?
Yeah, I have several comments. I don't like mid-week meetings because it jams its on. It jams my schedule, so I can't travel. So I hear you, and I'm not against moving it, but I would prefer it to either be a Tuesday or a Thursday rather than a Wednesday. That's one of the reasons the board meetings were moved from Wednesdays to Tuesdays is because if I can block the weeks, then I can handle travel better. But when it's in the dead center, it's a real issue to me. As far as the naming goes, I couldn't care less, you know, name it anything you want. I think it makes sense to incorporate the communications into it. I think that's a good idea. The, the main thing here to recognize is, and nobody has experienced this but me. Well, Paul has. But when you don't use the committees adequately, the board meetings get longer and longer and longer and longer. And we have had board meetings go until midnight. And at that point, stopping them, truncating off the rest of the events, saying, we're not going to do those this time. So that's where the committees really fit in. And that's where the consent calendar comes from in part. Is you, you do these discussions in the committees in order to avoid having to do them in the full board meeting. Not because of any lack of transparency, but just because of a lack of time. And I have had the disgusting opportunity to make presentations at the Larkspur Board City Council Meeting at 2:00 AM. That's routine for them. Absolutely routine. Every week, they go till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. And the problem is, obviously, that it's hard on everybody. People aren't at their best emotionally, intellectually, effectively. And that's what happens. If we don't kind of keep the machine running as it is, in my opinion, then you get into these situations where the board meetings become these long blown-out things. That's the problem at Larkspur. It's not the material they're presenting, it's public comment. And when you get these long public comment periods with 40 people, it's three hours. And I remember when we were doing Zoom meetings, and I probably shouldn't admit this, but I'm going to, essentially falling asleep during the meeting. It, it's just hard to pay attention for five hours in a Zoom meeting. And, you know, it's not a lack of interest. I assure you, I, my interest never stops. It's just physically falling asleep. So, you know, there's a price to pay for changing things. And we need to be sure that you fully understand what those prices are.
So Director Russell, if I can, just to ensure I'm capturing the comments, in terms of these three changes that Adrian proposed, you reflected on the day of the week as your concern. The other comments I think may fit more when we get into the dual noticing following the discussion on the committee restructuring.
Like, I commented on more than that, Ben. I concur with two.
Right.
And.
And supported one.
I don't care about the name.
Right.
You know, call it whatever you wish.
Okay, so I, I do think we're interested. Thank you for the comments at this point. Any other board comments on the proposal that Adrian made? Particularly, well, generally, but also day of the week. So ideally, we can zero in on that.
Just for clarification, Mondays wouldn't make sense for staff then either. If preferred, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursdays, looking at the optimal options.
I, I think optimal, yes, Fridays.
Stick with optimal then. I think we have some opportunity to stay there if we, if we need consensus, we can move to other days.
Yeah, I, I think Friday is probably the toughest day for staff. Monday would be better.
Monday gets tough because of holidays. We'll have a lot of exceptions for rescheduling those. Yeah, generally Wednesday and Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we could keep it within that range, Wednesday being out down here. Okay. Sorry, I should have said if we can, Tuesday or Thursday. Okay.
As far as those Mondays go, I mean, that's an interesting comment about holidays, but those are known. So that meeting could be moved?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the exceptions we already made in the schedule. It'll take some work to go back and just figure that out. I'm sure we could.
Or we stand as is this year and change it next year.
Additional comments?
I just had a question. So, yeah, would an effort be made, like say we went to Tuesday, would an effort be made to put the meetings on a day when we do not have a nighttime board meeting?
Definitely, yeah.
Because I think that could be a lot.
Yeah, I'm good with Tuesday or Thursday. And I, I think this is a very thoughtful proposal. It's going to save quite a number of meetings for folks. I think it'll be easier for the staff. I just want to make sure that water efficiency and communications don't get lost in this. And I, I know we say that, I, we did have, I looked back in some of our original meetings. We did have a first and second to have the administrative side of F and A be a part of every monthly F and A meeting. And then I think it moved to quarterly somehow, and maybe that was approved or not. I think it's so important for us to have the regular updates from the staff in the finance meetings. And, and, and whether it's metrics or hires or open hires or et cetera, you know, what's some of the energy that's going on, the, the contest that we're doing? It's really, it's really an important thing. And so I just want to make sure, since that seems to have waned a little bit over time with some lack of focus, I want to make sure that water efficiency and communications do not go down that path. The awards that we're getting in water efficiency, the pride that we have in what we're doing there, no doubt is to a large extent because we focused on it. And this committee was created by previous board members because the critical importance of water efficiency and what we're doing. And I know you started off the strategic plan discussion this morning, saying that this is our top and most, most important priority right in front of us. So let's just, let's just keep that discipline, keep it at the top and, and make sure that we do it. And at minimum, do it quarterly and let's keep up our proud work in that, in that area. And, and obviously, we love hearing the amazing work you're doing in communications, award-winning work, and so we're super proud. Thank you. I'm supportive of the proposals.
Yeah, creative changes. I, I, I think they make sense. I, I actually, Jed, there may be an opportunity by integrating water efficiency and communications into that larger meeting to, to shine more attention. As the previous chair of watershed and communications, I felt like it was maybe a bit of an outlier and not as well attended by the public. So by bringing it into operate or planning, whatever we call it, we may be able to, you know, actually.
Raise the profile.
Exactly, raise the profile. So be worth exploring, I think.
And Director Kush, and Director Smith, I strongly support that mindset because, you know, all committees are created equally. But the operations committee or whatever it changes the name to really is, is one that gets a lot of attention. And so to bring communications and water efficiency into that fold, I think does highlight it, it elevates it. And I think it continues to bring at least or more attention to how important that component is. So thank you for coming up with that suggestion for that. In terms of day of the week, Tuesday is, is fine with me as well, if that works better. Any other discussion on potential day of the week that you'd like to have this? Any, any objections to Tuesdays that are not board days? Is that going to be too hard to de-conflict?
We'll go back and look at the calendar, but I think we can make that work.
Thank you. Without any further comments, we'll move on to dual noticing.
Thank you, board. Sorry, I'll try to, try to direct my comments sideways here as best I can. So we have talked about this issue of dual noticing a few times now. And we recently revisited this at one of our board meetings a couple of, a few weeks ago and talked about the practice. As you know, it was implemented by this district several years ago, most recently and formally in 2021, after sort of a legal review based on comments and concerns raised about Brown Act compliance. So from a legal standpoint, it was found that as long as we duly notice the meetings as committee meetings slash special board meetings, we are compliant with the Brown Act. And we have had a couple of other parameters implemented as part of board policy for that. And that includes that we endeavor not to have actual decisions made at committee meetings, even though there is a quorum of the board, so that, and that they are noticed as review and refer items. We don't have recommendations from committees because it would be awkward. I think, maybe there's a better word, but to have a full board recommend to itself, which feels tantamount to an approval. So we try to make those distinctions. We have had approvals happen, but we try to do that in rare cases where time is of the essence. And staff has to, it feels like we need to make, just have the board make a decision quickly. We have that opportunity available to us. So what would eliminate, elimination of dual noticing look like? There are different ways to implement it, but generally speaking, it would be the committee members, two, not three or more, attending the committee meetings with staff, with the public. They would be live-streamed and noticed just like they are now. And the difference would be, basically, they would not be a board meeting. And there would still be a report out of all of the discussion items that took place at the committee meetings at the board meetings. There could be some brief discussion of those issues that were raised. Potentially, there could be an implementation now of recommendations from committees because that would be two members of a board to speak to something, to speak to matters that were brought in front of the board. And of course, the agendas would be differently noticed. Board members would not be able to participate in the meetings. They could attend on Zoom, they would just be in the audience and should not speak to any of the issues raised. They would not be at the dais, they could be in the audience, I suppose, in person as well. That's fine under the Brown Act. So that's it in a nutshell. I did bring with me sort of the parameters that we proposed some time ago when we looked at formalizing the elimination of dual noticing. That would include the potential of duly noticing meetings where there was a particular matter of interest to the public for the full board. And we could always notice a special board meeting. Those are in the Brown Act for the very purpose of, of having an additional meeting where there's an interest of an item to the board and the public and it doesn't fit within the calendar schedule of our regular board meetings discussions. So that's always a possibility. It's a 24-hour notice under the Brown Act. So it can be done in pretty short order, or it can be thought, thought out within more extensive, you know, notice. We did talk about doing sort of a hybrid model as an option. That is, that some committees could have continued dual noticing and others would generally be noticed just as committee meetings. That's, that's an option that's open to the board. And as I think I've said in the past, it really is within the board's discretion. So I'll just open the discussion and we can see where we are with all of that.
Okay, so we can go ahead and open the discussion with the assumption there's three committees currently that we're talking about?
We, we can make that assumption.
Okay, great. So I'd like to go ahead and open up the board comment based on the comments that our general council's made.
Was there a recommendation?
There's no formal recommendation. Given that we've discussed this several times, I think there are a number of perspectives. And I think staff is prepared to implement whatever proposal the board lands on and will take direction at this time. And then as, as Adrian said, as with the calendar and other changes that we would be looking to implement based on that direction, we would be bringing that either to the next board meeting or the meeting after that, as soon as we could prepare the item, likely next week.
Okay, great. I, I'm supportive of dual noticing for the new planning committee, operations committee, as it's currently called, and changing the finance committee meeting to be just a committee meeting and not dual notice.
Director Mayor?
I think, I think I concur with Director Smith on that. I think that makes a lot of sense. I know I personally probably would go to those, most of those meetings, but it would be nice to.
You can't. That's the whole point.
But you can in the audience.
Yeah, but you can't participate.
Yeah, I would just, I feel like if I even just been in the audience, like it would keep, I would be able to kind of stay up to speed on issues like rates and things like that, that would be of concern. So, but I don't have a strong feeling, really.
Director Russell?
Well, I have very strong feelings. The inexperience of this board is such that these meetings are essential, especially for you, Diana. You need to not just go, but to participate. You've got a learning curve in front of you that is horrendous. You're looking at stairs that don't stop. And to just nonchalantly blow it off, like, whatever, it's a bureaucracy, it's not bureaucracy. It's learning. And the only way to learn, the previous board instituted these for a reason. And I find it kind of humorous because Mimi Willard was the driving force in making us dual notice. And, you know, I'm surprised she left. She gave her two bits. But it's, was done to answer her position. And what it does is it allows full participation of the board in the discussions. And while, you know, you can say, finance is finance, okay, the machine runs on money. And without that input and without having firsthand knowledge and action, I think it's just, I'm frankly taken aback. I, I think it's just shows a lack of experience, a lack of understanding of what's actually happening in these meetings and why they're so important. This is a very time-consuming job. You probably have heard me say this before. It's cost me millions of dollars to be on this board in lost billable time. But I'm able to absorb that and have. It's not a whine, it's just a statement of fact. And it is, I had somebody jump me at a rate hearing. She said, you guys get paid so much money for two meetings a month. I said, two meetings a month? I wish it was two meetings a month. Try 10 meetings a month. And that doesn't include the prep time. And if that is such a burden, then it's a problem. Okay? And I, I don't buy the argument at all that has been expressed that because their notice is board meetings, it's a different thing. That isn't the way to look at it, in my opinion, at all. The way to look at it is, what are my constituents missing by my presence not being there and not being heard? That's what's being missed. And where we'd have full expression or full discussion of these at board meetings following up, that's a different issue. If we, if we're going to have it, it's fine. But if it's not the way it works here, I got the idea about a year ago that we needed a briefing on the committees. That's where that briefing comes from. Because I said, you know, if you don't make it, how do you even know what happened? And no one's going to go back, trust me, and look at the videos. It's not going to happen. The public may, but the board's not going to. So when you're there, So when you're there, you participate and you hear firsthand. And you hear what the public has to say firsthand. To me, we're solving a non-problem, which I just don't get. It's like there's no harm, no foul in leaving it the way it is, that I see. I don't see a single benefit of changing it. So that's how I see it.
Thank you, Director Kush.
Terry, I know there's a reason that you put me next to Director Russell for this conversation. Heard all of your remarks, Larry, you know, certainly respect your perspectives. But as you know, I, you know, I think I lean in a different direction. I would also support a moving from a consistent dual noticing of all committee meetings to trying a hybrid approach similar to what Jed suggested. It may may not work, and we may want to go back to the current situation we're in now. But I think it's worth exploring an alternative.
Thank you. You know, I think what helps me make this decision is understanding what the actual downstream effects are. And I think moving communications and water efficiency into a new committee, wherever the name may be, I think combines a lot of efforts and also those those topics to the forefront. And maintaining dual noticing from that committee now, we're really capturing what would be 16 meetings a year still remain dual noticing. So where does that leave us really in reality? It leaves us 16 meetings that potentially could not be, four for watershed. Actually, probably there's not 12 for finance, right? We missed two months, so there's 10. So we're looking at 10 finance meetings that aren't duly noticed. And not to go tit for tat, but every finance committee meeting I've watched, I've watched or missed, I've watched on Zoom and then reported back to staff with questions and things like that. So I'm not trying to brag, but I've got a commute that I need to kill time with sometimes. But I think the actual impact is just not duly noticing 10 finance committee meetings. That's all we're asking for. So we're not looking for this massive, huge change in everything. And I think it's worth a look. I think it's worth a try. If the if it does become an issue, if there are issues that cannot be resolved from finance in a regular board meeting. Again, we're not making decisions without people there. We're hearing what staff has to say to bring back to a full committee. And only being on this board for two years now, there hasn't been a consent item pulled yet from our calendar in terms of additional follow-up. And and I know that's partly due because there are dual noticing, but not everybody's attended all of those committees. So there is the opportunity to go back and do it. So I lead with the opportunity to to make a small change that could have an impact. I know it's a lot less work for staff. You're not gearing up for a full board meeting. So for me, I'd like to move, my recommendation is move forward with the recommendations that were first proposed on the committee changes, but then only stopping the dual notice for the finance committee meeting right now and allow for the watershed based on all the activity going on there. Watershed committee remain dual notice, and of course, the planning meeting remain dual notice too. So I'm not sure at what point we go from here, but any other additional director comments?
I have another. What metric would you propose to evaluate the success or failure of the changes?
I'm not sure a metric would be needed as opposed to actual true board member issues. Meaning that, hey, I didn't get a chance to talk about this stuff, and now we're going to have an issue with it. I don't, I don't know if there's a metric out there that would be kind of a delineation above or below a line where we'd want to move for success to that. I think it'd be a, go for it.
I was responding to your comment that you would, let's give it a try and see what happens. How do we know what happens?
No, it's a very valid question. Everyone, I think for us, there's two sides of this. It becomes such an issue for staff where they can't efficiently put something together and then how to present it in a way we can digest it at a full board meeting. I think that's thing one, the most important thing to consider their time. But two is individual consternation. If we have an issue that, hey, I'm not getting what I need because I couldn't go and ask this question. I think that's a real consideration. And should that continue to come up, then we can revisit it. Because this is not a forever decision. I think we're looking at an incremental step to see if we can evaluate how going to a committee meeting for finance alone would work. And I think it's an interesting step to to consider.
Yeah, I think it's important to know that, to notice that some of the finance committee meetings may end up being noticed for board meetings or special board meetings. So there will be times, no doubt, rates and others, where we need to bring the full board together. That will be properly noticed well ahead of time. So it probably won't, it won't even be 10. I don't know, maybe like seven or so when it when it comes to reality. But Larry, we do this different than every other agency in Marin. And I just don't know why we think we're so different. Why can't we have a committee meeting for finance like every other city council and every other agency? Why are we so different?
I think it's the nature of the business. We're running a business. Cities are not businesses. Cities are government structures. We're not. We're a, I'm going to use the word quasi-private. We're not really private. But we're running a corporation. And our constituents, whether they realize it or not, are stockholders in our corporation. The value of their house, all these things that go along with the water supply are all accruing to them. We all ask very little, you know, the vote for us every four years and come to the meetings. And I think the more we can sit with the public, the better off we are as a board. We do a better job of communicating by doing that. And, you know, I found your comment interesting, Jed, about changing the notice. My schedule is complex, okay? I'm out a year, okay? So the, you may have heard me talk about the schedule. I have this absolute rule. If it's scheduled, don't change it, okay? Because other people are scheduling their schedules around our schedule. And I do too. And so, you know, I know it seems difficult that 10 months out, you know, I'm going to be in Africa next month. I'll attend the meetings from Africa, you know, because I know where they are and I know what's scheduled. And even though it's three in the morning or something in Africa, I'll be at the meeting. And, um, but if you start making it, and I don't know what adequate notice is in that situation. Is it like, you think in a month ahead, we know?
Really good point. Maybe when we add that is something we could schedule as soon as possible for the rest of the year. So we can let the public know and Larry and others when to prepare for full finance committee meetings. And then, and then I'm not sure if you're going to be on the finance committee, but it sounds like we'll save a bunch of meetings for you. So then you can, you can take them off your schedule.
But the thing is that I think maybe it would be better under that scenario to schedule them as dual noticed and take the dual notice away than it would be to take the dual notice away and then schedule them. That way, at least you, it's something that you don't necessarily have to put in your schedule. Because you can say, hey, we're not anticipating these three or these five. Or better yet, make the decision now. And I don't know, Brett, if you feel that you can do that.
Maybe that's what we're proposing.
I'd say.
Their schedule is dual dual notice now, right? We already scheduled them.
Yeah, yeah, the current calendar has them all dual notice. What I was going to share, just in context of the conversation, is, is I think about what's ahead for finance committee. We could anticipate, for example, a couple of meetings we would want dual noticed as we're bringing the budget, the two-year budget for discussions with the board. That's kind of this coming year, the big policy lift in terms of finance.
And those days already would be already identified as we move forward and potentially done. So that takes care of some of the, some of the challenges. And then we're now we're getting down to just a handful of meetings that that could throw us off. Is there, outside of the ones that I've identified, is there a procedural issue that if we did dual notice finance committee for the remainder of 25, like we we looked at in December, that we would pull it off, the ones we don't need? And at what kind, what would be the the battle rhythm for that?
That's almost like proving the negative, in my view. I'm not trying to weigh in kind of positional, but I would just say from a staff view, it'd certainly be much easier, just logistically, to not dual notice and identify topics where you want the full board than the reverse, trying to, again, prove the negative. Okay, this meeting we don't need. There's an awkwardness to that.
No, no, and appreciate the the perspective there. And then in terms of anticipation of dual noticed meetings for finance for the calendar year 25, we have a rough estimate how many that would be out of the 10 meetings.
Yeah, I think it probably two or three. Brett and I would certainly, I think, a couple in terms of the two-year budget. We can think about the second six-month period if we have any significant, maybe the audit review or something like that.
Okay. Okay, good. I think, and I think that starts giving us some clarity as we move forward with that. And those will be able to identify relatively quickly moving forward. Okay. And then we also have a procedure in place should a topic of necessity or urgency occur, regardless of what it is across the district. We have the ability to hold a special board meeting, such we have recently with the litigation against our pilot bike programs.
Absolutely. We can notice special board meetings. And what we usually do is poll the board for availability before we sort of schedule that. And sometimes there's more urgency than others. And then we have a 24-hour notice. And I would say that, you know, we try very much to put those items that that are important to the full board on a full, regular, full board meeting wherever possible.
Right. So I think, you know, for perspective here, which I think is important to maintain, we have a really robust new committee that's going to incorporate a couple of other aspects of our operation that will remain dual notice, that will remain a really important meeting to attend. We'll be able to get a lot of good, critical discussion out of there. Watershed committee will then remain dual notice. And then we're looking at essentially five finance committee meetings over the course of the whole year. And I, I think that starts to make sense a little bit. And I look at, to the point, I think you make a very valid point, Director Russell, about getting up to speed. And a product of that, I hope, although there's still stairs in my future as I look upward. But I think we could hold the same for the one TAM group, Sonoma Water, North Bay Reuse. All those things would benefit if we all attended those as well. And I know we can as a public, but at the same time, would we be able to have the same opportunity should a designated person from the district go? And and I'm not trying to go down a rabbit hole. I just want to try to maintain, maintain perspective when we're looking at workload dissemination.
Outside meetings are different. Okay, like one TAM. You know, you're, the person who attends is a representative of the board. It's not the board attending. So it's a little different to look at those, in my opinion.
No, no, fair point. But it does provide the opportunity for Marin Waters Board to be represented and make statements and try to influence decisions and things like that. So and also, to your point earlier, is actually get up to speed and then learn quite a bit about the operation. Both Molly and Adrian, is that enough direction from us today to bring something for Tuesday?
Yes, I think I have a clear direction, so we can work on an item. Thumbs up over there with Adrian. So we'll, we'll work on an item for the next board meeting. That'll be, just for clarity, just it'll be a reconfiguration of our committee structure, reconfiguration of the dual noticing direction and an updated calendar. And we'll be looking at preparing that for next, the next week.
And just doing a quick scan of the calendar and looking at Tuesday, there are some dates we will have to do exceptions for. And so we'll bring those up when we bring the item back. But just an initial look, we saw that there's a couple areas that it won't work.
Thank you. Just for my planning purposes, what, combining these committees, what will that do to the, will the planning, now planning committee meeting? How long will those meetings generally be, do you think? I'm assuming they're going to get longer than they were.
Yeah, the committees are interesting. I mean, sometimes we go to an operations committee, 45 minutes, sometimes three hours, driven by topic. And as staff, we do try and balance that to the best we can, and we would continue to do it. So, yeah, bringing on a quarterly basis, efficiency and comms, we would stagger those so they wouldn't both be necessarily on the same one and probably fill it, fill in the shorter meetings. So I wouldn't expect a significant shift in the length in a general sense.
Great. With that, do we have any public comment, Terry?
Yes, Phil Soder.
Thanks for the the great discussion, as always. As as a member of the public, I really value the director input. And that goes for Director Russell, who's been here many years, and for Director Meyer, who's made contributions already in her short tenure. I really would hate to lose that board insight. And my, my feeling is two people is more of a conversation rather than a committee. I could go to a two-person committee and get a sense of where the board is going. And then I get to an actual board meeting and find the vote is quite different. So I really would would miss that, that ability to bring the board together. It's not a single idea board. This isn't a unanimous board, and this isn't a disinterested board. I find the conversations is of real value to the public. I think it's would be a loss to the public to reduce the public board interaction. And I'd sure hate to go to a committee meeting and see any board member or my representative having to sit on his hands because he's not able to make a comment. And I'm also concerned that if it's a two-person committee, that a staff presentation could get truncated, that wouldn't make the effort that they would make for the full board. That's probably not true, but it's a risk that's out there. And finally, if we're only talking about five meetings a year, is it really worth all the discussion and the uncertainty? Thanks.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay, with that, then go ahead and move to, back to our regular work plan presentation. Great. We'll start back with goal number three.
All right, good afternoon, board members. Sean Horn, Director of Watershed Resources. Goal three is our watershed stewardship goal that we're going to present to you today. There's five exciting objectives that we're going to review with you all today. With the management of the Mount Tam watershed and the district's watershed lands more broadly comes an exceptional responsibility, but also lots of opportunities that we hope to review with you and discuss today. I just want to flag before we get started that there's probably a lot of focused discussion that we can have today on on goal two and four and five as they kind of bleed together. So I'll walk through all of this, but I just wanted to flag those so you can consider some of the topics there. So within our first goal, our creek restoration efforts, we have this exceptional project, the restoration of Lagunitas Creek that we're moving forward with. It's the largest restoration effort the district has taken on. And, you know, it's in partnership with our resource agencies, our Lagunitas TAC and our state parks, landowner for that project, which will highlight kind of where we are and where we're going in the next, next year. In alignment with the Lagunitas stewardship plan, you'll see that this is the one item that we're not identifying for the coming fiscal year. And this is, the stewardship plan guides all of our fisheries monitoring, which we're carrying out on an annual basis. This was an update to that plan that we've been identifying as something that would be good to do. But with the restoration that we're doing in Lagunitas Creek and some of the monitoring that we'll be doing long-term for that project for effectiveness and also with the Nacasio spillway enhancement project, we see opportunities that those might get rolled into the update to the stewardship plan. So we're putting that out a year. I'll talk about some of the new monitoring technology that we're integrating in our fisheries work and then provide a brief overview of some of the ways we're supporting the broader, sharing our exceptional fisheries resources more broadly to advance various efforts. So Lagunitas Creek, we're going to be initiating implementation of Phase 1B that cites 1, 2, 3, 12, and 13 with funding from Department of Water Resources and the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. We were very successful this year with support from our engineering group in implementing Phase 1A. And that was fully funded by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And in addition to the implementation phase, we're starting our advancement of the designs from 30% to 100% in Phase 2. So that's also moving forward with additional funding from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. The pit tag antenna, exceptional program that we've been rolling out and building off of some limited infrastructure that we had in the creek. And we now have five pit tag antennas that we're spreading across the watershed, helping us understand how salmon are returning to our system. But we're also using utilizing that technology to support some of our gravel augmentation studies. So as we go to implement phase one B upstream, we're going to be augmenting gravel into the system. We're actually going to be pit tagging that gravel and monitoring how that moves through the system to understand kind of our frequency long term of how we augment gravel in the system to support spawning activities.
Sean, can I jump in? I know you're just getting started, but I didn't want to miss this. This is, this is such a cool thing to be able to share the story for. And I've tried to articulate it to some family and friends. And I think the, the very like minimal informed conversation I can have still catches their interest quite a bit. This would be so cool to do a video on or some sort of public outreach piece to the extent where you feel comfortable releasing the information because it's such a unique thing that's going on and people walk by and drive by all day long, have no idea. I mean, the people are just sitting there staring at Lagunitas Creek, looking for Coho salmon, have no idea all the efforts you're putting in. So the more we can get this out there, I think it's just such a really unique story to tell.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll just note that later in this slide deck, we'll be talking about some of the ways our communications has been supporting us and telling that story. And so some of the kiosk updates that we'll be doing more broadly are going to be focused on telling the story of the restoration of Lagunitas Creek. And then we've also been able to develop some drone footage for the restoration activities that our comms group worked on in terms of highlighting that for the public. And our fisheries staff are actually coordinating a panel at the Salmon Restoration Federation Conference, which is like the big California Fisheries Conference that happens every year on the use of drone technology for monitoring. And I could see the pit tag antenna gravel monitoring going to a future SRF conference as well as something that we're doing.
That's fantastic. And I, and the efforts, you know, the, the actual kiosk going across Marin Trail, the stuff that's going up Leon Cronin is really neat, but it's, it's so targeted just to people that get out there and actually be able to spread the word at a little bit greater distance would be, would be really interesting to see how the results come out.
I think that's an excellent comment. If you recall the Caltrans signs that say your gas tax work, money at work. We have the same thing here, your rate payer money at work. And it's a, it's an excellent area because it's, it's non, I'm going to use the word partisan for lack of a better term, but there's no sides in it, right? Everybody likes fish. Either eating them or looking at them. And, you know, I, I think that we often miss some of the value in this that we could do more. And I think a film, it would be very interesting. I think it's something that the board would enjoy seeing, you know, always it's not three hours. You know, but a five minute kind of thing would be great. And we've done a little bit of that, I think we did one with the wall. There was the drone flying with the wall and some things that are really helpful because, you know, it, it's very hard, at least for my schedule, to get out to actually look at these things. But you bring them to me, then I'll look intently and the public's the same way, I think.
Yeah, yeah, great comments. We'll, we'll take those under consideration, think about how we can build that out in this year. So moving on to our second.
Sean, before you leave that, just on the regional restoration projects. I know there was some interest from the Marin Resource Conservation District to get input, support from us because they do a lot of work with the agricultural community to manage stream beds and things like that. Do you, do you see any potential, I know, you know, the workloads are pretty high already, but for engaging with a few of those groups to at least share learnings or?
So the district is very engaged with the RCD. We have a contract with the RCD to have them support some of our rotary screw trap monitoring that we set up about three years ago. And we've been utilizing their staff to support that. And then we've supported some of their work and others in Walker Creek as well as they've been looking at it. And our fisheries staff are absolutely available to support ongoing conversations in the watersheds.
So, so that's one group you, you know, you're in touch with there. I think it's Nancy Scolari there, their ED, okay, great.
And the, and then the chair of the Lagunitas TAC is a RCD member.
Right, Sarah Phillips has their urban stream program and chairs the Lagunitas TAC. And now our fisheries biologist, Eric Atlinger is the co-chair of that committee. And so applying our regional expertise, the focus for this coming year is really Nacasio Creek Fisheries Study. This is an exceptional effort that we are carrying out to put gauging on Nacasio Creek so we can monitor hydrology. And then also doing habitat assessments and spawning surveys within the section of creek downstream of the reservoir. So we can understand future project components to think about as you consider the spillway enhancement project moving forward. So the second objective that we have is our watershed resiliency. The things we want to highlight here are our rangers are doing an exceptional job just maintaining partnerships throughout the community. We are looking at continuing to sustain capacity to scale up our biodiversity fires and fuels integrated plan. We're advancing strategic partnerships through our collaborations with various entities like One TAM to secure additional funding to scale up that work. And we've been able to launch a ranger trainee program as part of our workforce development focus. Also continuing to support our Maricor programs, the Grizzly Corps, as well as the Watershed Stewardship Program and continuing partnerships with CCNB and CCC. And we also have kind of needs to consider replacing aging wildland firefighting equipment as well as vegetation management equipment. So in terms of public safety partnerships for this coming year, our rangers will continue to coordinate their interagency trainings that they do on the watershed for search and rescue as well as for wildfire operations. We'll also continue to look at BIFIP priorities and advancing those as we move into, I believe it is year six now of the implementation of the BIFIP, where we're implementing about 1,500 acres of vegetation management on an annual basis and bringing in a significant amount of grant funding to help scale that work. We'll be looking at continuing to advance the environmental compliance needs associated with that plan. So we can stay in compliance with that, that document as well as some of the inventories that we do to just better understand the watershed in response to some of these activities that we're applying. Strategic partnerships specifically around wildfire, Marin wildfire prevention authority is really maturing and becoming a supporting partner for how we're doing the work on the watershed and beyond the watershed as well. Help that one die. Thanks. We also recently completed the forest health strategy, which is allowing us to look at how we can better apply our BIFIP management activities on the watershed. We have a ranger trainee program and moving into the workforce development phase. The ranger trainee program was an exceptional program that the, the board approved launching about a year and a half ago. We had our first ranger trainee go through the post certificate and our second one's scheduled to start in April. So it's a real way that we're filling this kind of professional gap in training to bring people into that ranger career field. As I mentioned, the Maricor program through UC Berkeley, the Grizzly Corps has really supported our volunteer program. And then the Watershed Stewardship Program is advancing our fisheries work in Lagunitas Creek. And that one, we've been participating in for about 25 years now, so an exceptional partnership. We've also been collaborating, as I just mentioned, with our CCNB partners and CCC where we've gotten some specific grants that go to those agencies to bring their crews to our landscape to do work under our BIFIP and our, our roads and trails program as well. In the coming year for wildland firefighting equipment, one of the needs that we do have is considering the, the replacement of a four wheel drive water tender on the watershed. And, and you know, one thing we've thought a lot about is should that asset be a potable water tender? So that it can be used for other services as well. And then it's also used to support our main breaks throughout the community when there's cleanup that needs to be done. So that's a multifaceted asset that we have. So maybe on BIFIP, just to kind of close the loop in our thinking on watershed resiliency, you know, we've done a lot of good work developing a plan for how that's moving forward. We've gotten grant funding for it, but we do see the benefit of using additional tools to help us assess where those vegetation treatments are being applied and how to be strategic with those resources. And then also continuing to work with Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority to kind of build out the treatments into areas that they're working as well.
Great. Can we pause right here just to see board comments because this is such a timely topic.
Sean, what's the life cycle for the current BIFIP?
Yeah, it's a, you know, it was built out to help us increase the amount of funding for a five year period. So basically we said, we wanted to get to a $3 million budget for BIFIP, which would apply 1,500 acres of veg management on annual basis. And a lot of that vegetation management is routine maintenance. So if we've built a fuel break, we want to go back and maintain that fuel break infrastructure. If we're doing defensible space, we want to do that every year. If we're doing broom management, we want to be going back on a cyclical cycle and maintaining those areas that we've treated to, you know, maintain those investments. So the BIFIP could be applied for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years and still be relevant. But we can also, as we have done, consider making adjustments to it periodically.
And, and some of those may require revisiting the environmental impact reports, others may be exempt from that. So is there anything, given the experience to date, that you, that stands out as a modification or additional component that you think we should be considering?
I think it is a very comprehensive plan and it is supported now by our forest health strategy that was developed through the One TAM partnership, which provides a lot of the environmental justification for the types of work that we're doing on the watershed. We could absolutely be doing additional work. You know, we're doing a lot of good forest restoration work under this plan and you have a limit on the number of acres that you can do each year. It's about 150 or so, and then we're maintaining about an equal amount. So that could be scaled up. We have invasive plant issues that we could be taking a different approach on or scaling up our management. So there's different tools that you could consider integrating into the plan at some point. Those are the two that come to top of mind. And I would say prescribed fire as well is that we do have, you know, two to three projects are analyzed in that environmental document. And if there was an interest in, you know, having that applied on a larger scale, we might want to be looking at that.
Scaling up existing activities rather than pivoting or, or bringing in new ones.
That's a good.
Thank you.
I wasn't expecting you to turn to me when you did, but I do have a quick comment. You caught my interest about this water truck. Is, we have one now, yes?
Yeah, we have the only four wheel drive water tender in the county.
Yes. And what I'm thinking is probably it makes more sense to convert that guy into the potable, make his life easier and, and get a newer vehicle to do the four wheel drive, the hard part. Let that one, I think the idea of, of keeping it potable, it's going to be difficult with the single vehicle. Not impossible because you could disinfect in between. But I have a question about the old one too. My clients are whining incredibly about this change in the air quality requirements for the engines. Does he fit into that goal?
I believe so. But I want to look at our operations, they're exempt because they're emergency response vehicles.
Yeah, they require the filters now, right, on the diesel exhaust. And yeah, that's what I thought might be happening. Although we could re-engine him, right, conceivably, you know. It depends on how worn out he is, if at all, or it is.
And this is some of the work that we do that I'm most proud of and I talk about the most and get asked about. So keep it up more and more and more the better. Any way that you can provide research that enables us to fund more and be more supportive, please let us know.
Director Mayer, any comments on this?
One comment, a couple of questions. I just want to reiterate what Director Smith said. I, I went with the Turtle Restoration Network last weekend and got a tour and it was, they pointed to different trees that had been put into the creek and I just, I, I know that we were doing it with a lot of other groups, but it was just so cool. And, and, and to see that, you know, eggs were laid there and I just felt so proud. And so I want to thank you for that. And, and we went back again this last weekend and so I just find that it's enjoying that, that area in a way I never did before. I had a question on the, I remember from the pathway modeling meeting that we had maybe six months ago, before I was on the board, obviously, there was an expert. I think you probably know, the guy was like insanely brilliant. And I know Matt knows who I'm talking about, but anyway, I remember him talking about the pathway modeling and leaving with the impression that what the Marin wildfire prevention authority and kind of what he was suggesting and what the, where the Marin water might be going seemed like they were a little bit askew in that, you know, he was talking about the importance of defensible space where the, the watershed meant the urban area. And then it seemed like they were a little bit more focused on defensible space right now within, deep in the watershed. I don't know if I have that correct, but I just wondered, you know, is there an effort to kind of be in sync with them and to share with them? I don't know if they have their own experts, but kind of to share with them because, you know, that kind of information.
So there's a tremendous amount of integration going on and collaboration in that Marin water participates with Marin Fire Safe Marin, who focuses on the built environment and the private property. Marin wildfire prevention authority is, you know, scaling that work around the WUI and within the WUI and in evacuation routes as well. They're collaborating with us as we look at the pathway modeling and thinking about how we utilize that. They're also developing their own fuel break projects adjacent to these public lands and using pathways to help kind of refine their treatments. And we're evaluating that with them to see where there's opportunity for synergy.
Great. And then finally, I just wanted to go back to the dual noticing for one second because, you know, I, I think I've changed my, my thought on that. I mean, I'm, I know I'm going to be at those meetings anyway. And one of the thing, I, one of the things that I really like about being on the board is that I'm a question asker and I get dibs on asking questions. So, you know, for what it's worth, I just wanted to convey that. I, I think that it sounds like I just, I, I think there's some really good benefits of the dual noticing. That's it, thanks.
So I'll, I'll wrap things up. I'll be somewhat pointed and quick. I think, you know, this is our top priority on the watershed because without any protection from wildfire, you can do away with all the habitat restoration and all that stuff, water quality, everything. It, it gets, goes away and unfortunately we'll see that throughout the state. And you talked about, you know, science coming out of watershed projects throughout California. Been exposed to extreme wildfire, unfortunately those are increasing and we're seeing those and the studies coming out of those are not at all where we want to be based on what's actually happening, the chemical composition. But looking at the BIFIP and I think, you know, we have such a great foundation from which we can build on and use funds and move forward to that. Continue looking at what the end result or what perfect looks like. And I think what that looks like is a mitigated environment based on pathway modeling and then a plan to have returned on an interval prescribed fire throughout the watershed where we're burning, you know, 20, 25% of the watershed. That's very aggressive, I get that, you know, maybe half that number every, annually, so that we're staying on top of things and moving forward from there. Because if we're not driving towards prescribed fire on the watershed, I, I don't know if we're really moving in a direction where we should be going because that's going to be the ultimate goal. Once we remove all the vegetation in there. And again, applaud your staff this week, again, more pile burning, which was great to see. I'm not sure if it actually happened, but that kind of stuff is moving forward. But we need to have a pathway model plan ready to go. And I know you guys have been working on it. It'll be really good for us to see a quick sneak peek or at least a theory of the thought process, not only for our own watershed, but also how it integrates with the built environment throughout Marin and how the partnership is, is strong. So that there's synergies around fire prevention efforts would be really good. And then how that effort is going to be driving a prescribed fire plan for the mountain. I think we're, we're really good how we have a start, you know, a little bit on the top of the mountain by Mountain Home Theater, excuse me, Mountain Theater. But that should be expanded quite a bit. I know we both feel the same way. My next question is going to be what impediments or what pinch points are you experiencing that you need help pushing forward to get to that? One that comes to mind right away before you answer is the burn boss or the, the actual prescribed fire capacity in the county. If Marin County Fire cannot produce a burn boss, that's going to be available for you on a regular basis to an effort we need it. We can't let them hold us up. We need to find an alternative for that. And so I encourage you to continue to push on that piece and hopefully that the Marin County Burn Cooperative or where they're calling it is able to produce some resources that we can leverage, but we need to be driving there and not let another outside agency hold us up. It's not a regulatory agency.
I, you touched on it, the Marin Prescribed Burn Cooperative is trying to. You touched on it, the Marin Prescribed Burn Cooperative is trying to get their arms around this issue and how to have that capacity to do prescribed fire. The districts developed a number of burn plans with the guidance of a burn boss. The resources that County Fire brings to the day of the burn are critical for us to implement. But the burn boss piece is, right now, the pinch point.
Yeah, so if we can look on that, because it'd be interesting to look into, because I believe Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority monies, significant amounts go into hand crews from Marin County Fire. So at some point, we should look into that, whether it's through the contract we currently have, or whatever the case may be. But we don't have to rely, my preference would always be rely on the local experts, Marin County Fire, for the burn boss. However, if they cannot have one that's available at a frequency we need, we have to look somewhere else for that.
I just wanted to touch on something Sean said in the spirit of kind of a retreat conversation. I think he said something in regard to the BFFIP, where, you know, one area, in response to updating it, we could look at additional tools. And perhaps it was a very subtle breadcrumb there. As we think about the tools we have and the tools we don't, and the invasive species we have in the watershed, particularly broom. I'm not suggesting now, I mean, we have enough with hot political issues currently. But I do think, maybe next year, maybe it's a year after, begin to have a conversation on, are we losing ground on broom? What are we going to do about the monoculture that's developing out there? And do we need additional tools? And including tackling discussions around, you know, integrated best management practices that may have some use of chemicals. So I just wanted to put it out there, because I think, you know, the strongest organizations are able to have these difficult conversations and really think about hot topics. And that's certainly one. And I'm not trying to stir things up whatsoever. I just think responsibly, at times, we should be able to have these discussions.
Thanks. We'll move on to our third objective around stewardship. The annual biological monitoring that the district does is critical to supporting our kind of scientific understanding of the watershed and as well as our environmental compliance for our operations and implementation. So we'll be continuing that. We've got this exceptional partnership growing, and I think I'm going to talk to it in the following slide, but I want to shine some light on just the nesting of networks that's happened here in Marin. And then evaluating opportunities for regional restoration and some of the kind of network work, partnership work that we're doing, and how that's informing our restoration interests. And then as we think about stewardship, we're really focused in the coming year and over the last year on how we can resurrect a trail maintenance program through our volunteer program, as well as with our maintenance staff and crews supporting that, and how we can engage the community in participating in the stewardship of the landscape. And then we also have been and will continue to advance interpretive offerings and opportunities for the watershed. So in the coming year for biological monitoring, we're really focused on Lagunitas Creek implementation, advancing some of the new pit tag monitoring that we spoke of, continuing to implement the biological monitoring that's outlined in our BFFIP. And then there's project-level compliance and Nikasio Creek studies that we're completing are supportive of that type of data collection and filling data gaps that we've had across the watershed. Regional partnerships, I think this is something we haven't talked a lot about at the watershed committee meeting, but it's good to, you know, have the opportunity to share with you here today. And that the One Tam Partnership has really blossomed and become a model across not just the state, but the nation. And then within that, or beyond that actually, is the Golden Gate Biosphere Network that we collaborate on, which goes from San Mateo to Sonoma County, along the coast and out to the Farallon Islands. That collaborative just completed the climate vulnerability assessment, and they just did a small webinar on that yesterday. And then throughout the nine counties of the Bay Area, the district participates in the Together Bay Area Initiative, which is doing a conservation lands network effort this next year to look at kind of how we can conserve more public lands and protect resources more broadly. And the collective on all of these networks are able to work at the state level to really align our Bay Area interests from a resource perspective with the state funding priorities. So this is an exceptional way that Marin has just continued to be a leader in developing these partnerships that allows us to work beyond our boundaries for good stewardship activities and really bringing funding to that needed area. That's driving some of our regional restoration priorities. And specifically, as the Golden Gate Biosphere Network Climate Vulnerability Assessment is published, there's going to be things that come out of that that inform our One Tam Peak Health Work and also inform some of the districts on the ground implementation. One area that our One Tam Partners are pulling back a little bit on that we need to be mindful of is the early detection rapid response. So for the last, you know, decade or so, we've really benefited from that group actually funding crews to be out on our roads and trails, identifying new invasives early and managing those. And that's an area that they're not supporting as much in the coming years. And that's part of kind of their reckoning coming out of COVID and some of their financial constraints. So just something for us to be aware of in terms of how we manage our watershed for that early detection rapid response program. Stewardship programs, we're going to sustain the trail stewardship events. We've really built some really strong partnerships with MCB, CA4B, some running clubs and other groups that are interested in helping maintain our roads and trails. And so we'll be continuing those quarterly events or monthly events, excuse me. And then our Rangers have really stepped up to host quarterly watershed interpretive hikes. And so they've been leading these. We did a historic one about an old Air Force crash not too long ago. Did one at West Peak. We did a birding walk at Bon Tempe, and I think we have one of our Ranger trainees queued up to do an interpretive hike here in the next month.
Just one question for something that's not on there. Has the Air Force Base component on the top of the mountain fallen off the radar? Is that still somewhere close enough, we're just looking for some opportunity?
That'll come up in our facilities and recreation discussion next.
Stay patient, is what you're saying. Thank you.
Just Sean, on the program, the stewardship programs and the national, natural resources interpretation, are we disseminating information about those through social media? Just making sure that we're, you know, trying to reach as many stake participants as possible?
Yeah, we have a listserv of our volunteers that get notified. We have a watershed volunteer calendar on our website. We have our new QR codes that are across the watershed that people can snap a photo of. Those are also on our maps. So if you have a watershed map that you got from the Sky Oaks Ranger Station and you snap a photo of that QR code, you'll get linked up to our volunteer calendar and opportunities. So going on to recreation, and this will kind of start to bleed into our facilities discussion as well. And I think this is where we are hoping for some fair amount of discussion from the board today. You know, we've completed the watershed recreation feasibility study. We'll talk about what we're doing there over the next year. We've completed portions of Azalea Hill Restoration Project, and we've got a number of elements to complete in the coming year. We've evaluated and will continue to evaluate aging infrastructure and opportunities for making improvements to our roads and trails network. One area that is very well-loved is Cataract Trail and would be benefiting from a large trail restoration project in the future. We've created self-guided tours on the watershed, and we'll be continuing to look for opportunities to bolster that. And I think that comes back around to some of the comments we received from the fisheries portion of this discussion, and that's where it'll fit in moving forward. The feasibility study, we reported out at the last watershed committee meeting, I believe, about some of the actions we've implemented under that thus far. We have the pilot programs that we're still working through. Azalea Hill Trail Restoration Project is moving forward in a very, we've been successful in implementing all of the components on the multi-use segment. We have to do a small cleanup in terms of a section of trail that is going to be narrower than initially conceived. And then we've got some additional work to do with the parking lot, where we need to develop a design for that kind of entry point into the hiking trail component. And what I wanted to highlight here is that Azalea Hill is a, you know, access planning project that the district advanced to separate hikers, or provide hikers rather, another opportunity to experience the watershed on their own, and then a multi-use route. That multi-use route was a really, you know, exceptional project that was able to advance. It comes with complexity when you try to achieve that multi-use standard of a four-foot trail that can be used by equestrians, hikers and bikers. So that's just something to consider as we start talking about roads and trails plan update. Is that, is that really where we're going? You know, all multi-use has to achieve that standard, or is there some others? Not sure if this is a sign that it's going too long. Yeah, so priority roads, and we're going to be looking at that and how we can prioritize trail improvements moving forward. And then we've got nature-based self-guided tours and various watershed kiosks that we intend to update. So I'll just go to facilities really quick, and then we'll bring the discussion back around to the recreation piece. The Roads and Trails Plan is a document we've discussed updating. But if you look at the Roads and Trails Plan, it is a maintenance document. It gives us the tools to maintain. It doesn't direct us to build new trails or adjust the infrastructure in a significant way. So it's kind of relevant and continues to be relevant from a maintenance standpoint. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then we have some facilities on the watershed that are in need of improvements, such as Sky Oaks Ranger Station, and we have other watershed housing assets that have needs in the future. So the Roads and Trails Plan document, this was the big next step in the recreation planning space. And I think for the board to consider, there's kind of different avenues you could take at this point. We could go forth with a watershed-wide Roads and Trails Plan update. That'd probably be a pretty significant undertaking in terms of, you know, looking at the entire watershed and all of our roads and trails and thinking about what needs to be updated in that. The other approach you could take...
Sorry, Sean, the last time that was done was 2005.
That's correct.
The comprehensive.
And when you, but when you look at that document, it is just about how we maintain our roads and trails, and then gives us some tools for closing social trails and prioritizing that. Now, Azalea Hill...
Again, I hear a lot about how that plan also includes classifications of roads and trails for different purposes. And by updating that, it may allow us to identify the best options for reclassification. Is that...
That's one pathway. And I think that's, yeah, a very critical piece, is that it is our roads and trails classification. Azalea Hill Trail, right, was a specific trail project that was meant to improve access for multi-use. You know, we reviewed it under an environmental document. You know, if the board didn't want to take on the whole Roads and Trails Plan update, you could consider like an access planning project specific, and you could classify a trail type in that project, analyze it accordingly, and look at social trails, fire roads and other things. So if you wanted to do a smaller Azalea Hill-type project, you know, some said miles of improvement for bike access or for multi-use, whatever it might be, that would be another avenue you could consider. The Roads and Trails Plan kind of seems like a natural one to take on, but I was just kind of identifying that it is, you know, still serving the district in its current form. And there's choices you can make and direct staff to approach that with.
And those would presumably be driven on the objectives we established for revisiting the roads and trails plan. Those objectives may not require a full redo of that or update of that plan. It could be more targeted. Or alternatively, those objectives could require a full update of the entire plan.
I think you could think of it as a separate project document. And so you could, you know, take on a project for multi-use access in some form, and we'd analyze that as a project, and it'd be, you know, complementary to the Roads and Trails Plan.
So basically, a one-off on everything?
Or just a one-off, and it would be a large project.
And Azalea Hill, we, a one-off?
Yeah, Azalea Hill's a type of one-off. We did tear off of our existing Roads and Trails Plan. We might, you know, we'd consider options when we needed to evaluate it through CEQA. The watershed facilities, watershed is being integrated into that. I think Alex mentioned that earlier today. Watershed housing is something that we've identified in our, the strategic plan. And really, the focus this year is going to be on improving the Sky Oaks Headquarters to harden that facility. And we just have some, you know, infrastructure of that Ranger Station that needs updating. So that's everything for watersheds. I don't know if you want to circle back at all to the Roads and Trails discussion, or if you have any final comments?
Yeah, we could open up just a general discussion if that works for you. From Directors on this piece, Director Russell. Director Kush.
Yeah, Sean, the RTM piece feels like a big issue in my mind. And I think some of that is based on all the external, you know, comments I've heard regarding the importance of this document, how it could be used. I also perceive that it could end up taking us down a path that delays some of the, some of the things we would like to accomplish for a long time, because we've gone down another path. So it might be helpful to have sort of a list of the different options and the pros and cons associated with those as we consider updates, revisions, amendments to the Road and Trails Management Plan. It's just, it feels big to me, but it's not clear to me what is most effective, the most effective path for, or even what we're trying to necessarily achieve with that revisiting or update. And I know some of that is, a lot of it is probably in the feasibility study. So it means go back, read the feasibility study. But a reminder of that would, of those items would be helpful.
Yeah, that's a good comment, and we can think about how to bring something like that to the watershed committee meeting next. I think that, right, the feasibility study identified some pilot programs to give us some tools for updating the Roads and Trails Plan. We were surprised on how that kind of unwound. And so the Roads and Trails Plan being the next step seems really big now, considering. And so just looking at the success we have had with Azalea Hill, maybe a smaller, more focused approach would be in the interest of the district. It's just something we're thinking about.
And then there may be some considerations based on how the existing lawsuit is, you know, ends up.
Well, I think this is important work, and it's hard for me to get a sense of the scope of the different options that you have. I know you're loaded right now and understaffed dramatically. But I think we're overdue to have a good map of all of the trails and the uses and the environmental impact on a multi-dimensional level. I've supported an organization in the Northeast that is a wildland nature trust that seeks to preserve wildlands forever in some ways. And I have a hunch that we have some, you know, that are fully protectable in a lot of ways, that don't impact our water supply and others. So there might be opportunities for us to have tremendous long-term benefits by doing this kind of planning, not just for the use and recreation of the trails, but for looking at our whole watershed, the lands that we manage, and how we can have a broader stewardship. I think it's time. I just don't have a sense of how much effort that's going to undertake for you and to enable us to both satisfy the varied users as well as to take care of the really important habitat that we have. So maybe a sense of the scope of the options would be important. I do think it's time to do that. And with our new planning committee, if that's what it gets set up, that might be one of the early conversations that we have, especially given the fact that this board unanimously approved the use of trails in a way that got shot down. You know, there is a desire, clearly as voted by this board, to change some of the use. And since that has not happened, I think that we should fulfill our, our expressed desire to understand why. And hopefully, out of, as a result of that, we'll be better stewards, both for the native species in the watershed and protection of our water supply, as well as for the users that we have. So I think it was a good wake-up call to get this moving. And what this is, I'm looking for you to define and scope out for us.
So starting with Director Kush's comments about Azalea Hill and the piece of that. So, you know, it seems from the outside looking in, in terms of director-staff perspective, that Azalea Hill is a really big lift. Now, is it going to be a good project? I think very much so, but is the juice worth the squeeze on that in terms of work? So to better understand how much effort would go into something like an Azalea Hill component as opposed to a comprehensive look at the watershed, it would be really interesting to see. And then how you would do it if we did look towards the Azalea Hill model, meaning a one-off project, how we don't lose sight of what the bigger perspective is for the water district as opposed to just making something that doesn't make a ton of sense. And sticking on the Azalea Hill piece, I think, you know, when we look at the parking lot area too, depending on your comfort level with sharing information, but really tell the story of, yes, this is a trail project, but it is a habitat restoration project because of social use impacting really sensitive areas. Don't go in those areas, and this is why. use impacting really sensitive areas. Don't go in those areas. And this is why. And if you want to learn more, you can go to our website, wherever the case may be, but driving that piece home as well. The other thing, and I don't know how much it goes into a CIP piece, but when we look at the watershed facilities, specifically Sky Oaks, so ranger facilities, looking at it much like a one-off as opposed to a comprehensive look, does it make sense to try the one-off improvements there? If we can just look at it comprehensively, meaning what was, what does right look like for all the facilities on that, on the, on the watershed, at Sky Oaks in particular? And does it make sense to come up with a concept design? Design, is that something we could leverage the Mount Tam Fund to have a comp, or a look, you know, an actual design or what this could look like and include public education, true workforce housing facilities, you know, a ranger station that can function as a forward emergency operations center or a staging place for those responding to an incident on the watershed? Do we need a helicopter landing pad? Like things that we're thinking about that you guys probably talk about all day long, it would be so much easier if, or I wish we had this. And build that robust facility or at least have a plan for it so that every time we go to contribute funding, we're building towards an end result that we all think is the best for that. And I think it also opens the opportunity to, if there's facilities that we cannot afford internally, I mean, is there, is there, is there funding available for workforce housing? And can we use that, those types of opportunities on the watershed? Or is there a community benefit that would provide for an education center? Does someone want their name on it and provide opportunities? But without knowing what's potential or what you think is the best use for that space for facilities, it's hard to understand when we try to move forward with something. So I get the urgency to harden the structure, all for it, making sure all the infrastructure is up to date. But when we start talking replacement or bigger picture, let's get a design or concept, you know, and I don't want to do it one-off from what a CIP budget or facilities assessment would be, I think, not to reinvent the wheel, but if we got a concept of what it could look like, that'd be really interesting to see. Any other additional board comments for Director Horn?
Okay, I'll, I'll second the desire to look more at workforce housing. I think that's important work and that'd be a tremendous benefit as we look at our facilities. Thanks.
Terry, any public comment?
To note that, looking at the 2005 Road and Trails Plan, one thing it says is that the full implementation of all the strategies should be completed in 20 years. And here we are. And we're nowhere close, which really begs the question, or really says that it is time to update this plan. And if you think about it, in 2005, none of us were talking about climate change. And that's something that's really has to be added to the plan at this point. The other comment, thank you, Ben, was what I came up here to talk about was invasives and the use of herbicides. And as someone that's been pulling broom weekly, including this past week up there, I, I'm very familiar with the problem that we're facing and how it's expanding. And the problem with, as Sean knows, when you pull, you disturb the earth, which we're going back now, three years later, and we're going to the places that we've been, and we're repulling those places so that they don't flower. So I'd really encourage another look at using herbicides. When it was taken off the table, it was as much an emotional decision as anything. It wasn't really based on science at that time. And Janet Klein, at that point, had worked years and years on this. And she had a document about this thick, which would be great to dust that off because her staff did all the work on all the different ways to try and reduce invasive, reduce broom. And it really came back to the use of herbicides as the only effective method possible. And what was being suggested at that time to be at least 100 or 150 feet away from watercourses, I may have that number incorrect, but there's a lot of places on the watershed that are not near our water supply. I know it's an emotional issue for people. Don't poison our water. There's a lot of places that it would really help reduce fire danger and bring back biodiversity. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Great. Thank you very much. Better think we're ready to move on to goal four.
All right. Thank you, President Sampson. My name is Brett Upandall. I'm the Finance
Okay, go ahead and take a 10-minute break. Great. Okay, welcome back and thank you very much for goal three. So we'll go ahead and move on to goal four, our fiscal responsibility and our Finance Director Brett Upandall.
Thank you, President Sampson. Again, my name is Brett Upandall, the Finance Director here. And for my section here, we'll be talking goal four, fiscal responsibility. And as it says up there, the overarching theme of this goal is to manage our customer revenue and other financial resources for operating, maintaining, and upgrading the water system both today and in preparation for the future. And there's a lot in there to unpack, to unpack, I should say. And we spent the last three sections, essentially talking about the water system and thinking about, you know, many future plans. So there's a lot in here that kind of speaks to the long-term practice of the organization. There's a lot kind of behind-the-scenes work that goes into this. And, you know, the deliverables aren't the same as some of the other areas where we have each year, you know, new things that are happening. But there is a lot of, like I said, long-term focus into the best practices and establishing kind of the fundamentals within the district here. So we have the process down so that over the long term, the district will have the money to fund the key initiatives that we do have going on. So I'm proud to have these objectives here, as listed there, financial stability, fair, equitable, and proportional rates, cost-effective business processes, maximizing our outside funding so we can reduce financial impacts on our rate payers wherever possible, and then financial transparency to make sure we're upholding the, the trust of the rate payers and the public at large. So with that, I'll go into goal or objective number one, which is financial stability. And I should mention also too, that a lot of the kind of initiatives listed here under the fiscal responsibility goal are front-loaded. So you'll see a lot of checkmarks on the, on the first, you know, pages here as we got started on them early in the process. Some have, some have a longer tail, meaning they take more than a year to complete, but we're really starting them and getting them underway. And so in this particular area of financial stability, the idea here is to utilize reserves and invest in our infrastructure so we can have a more predictable cost structure and which should minimize the rate impact on customers. Because I think, I think as we're all trying to, to work towards a longer-term balance of finances, we don't want to have big, you know, swings either way in terms of rates and in terms of financial struggles or financial challenges here at the district. So part of that will be identifying the financial challenges in front of us. The second part of it is finding a funding, funding plan to kind of match that over time. So within that, the first goal, the first objective there, which is the first initiative, was to establish reserves, rate stabilization reserves to help mitigate the annual fluctuations. We're also working with the engineering team to support the capital, long-term capital improvement plan. That way we can kind of predictably know where we're investing over the long term. And then the third one there is, although it's a smaller portion of our revenue, our fees, rents, and other non-rate revenues, the idea there is just to update those regularly so that we don't have such a big lift in the future when we do need to update them. So we can have a predictable kind of each, each and every year, a couple percent increase, like keep pace with inflation. We don't get too out of balance and have to pass those costs on to rate payers where we can avoid that. So I just went through those each. As I mentioned, we've started on many of those already. So stabilization reserves, we did complete that last year. The board approved some relatively big changes to our reserve policy to add a little clarity to what we're holding reserves for, to add some target language into each reserve. So we know when we've met that target and when we're falling short. And that should help us over the long term again, as we have future rate cycles, being able to know when we need to kind of raise a little more money to invest and replenish those reserves. Or if the case is the opposite, if we have full reserves, we can, you know, kind of cancel that funding for a cycle or two and be able to invest those funds more on a cash basis in other areas of the district. So they're more well-defined now, they're more predictable. And we also added the Water Supply Project Reserve Fund, which will help us at least have something every year towards longer-term projects. And I think we've also stated within that reserve that can be used for grant matching for pilot projects and/or as the funding stream can be converted into debt service if needed for larger projects. So stabilization reserves are complete. The next two down there are more in line with the budget cycle coming up here. We have a two-year budget cycle. And so we are working with engineering now to start incorporating the long-term capital plan. I think we'll hear more about the Water System Master Plan that Alex mentioned earlier this morning, and see how we can work that in, not only to the next two-year budget cycle, but probably more importantly into the next four-year rate cycle and start deciding, you know, the prioritization process early on for what we may want to include in the financial plan for the next four years. Because as we do know, the rate, the rate setting is done for the upcoming two-year budget. And so we are kind of limited in our expenditure options. But at least this capital planning process and the Water System Master Plan will help us have a better idea for the next rate cycle for what we want to potentially take on in terms of funding there. And then finally, C up there, as, as I mentioned earlier, non-rate revenues, they're a much smaller portion of our revenue base, but it is important to update those regularly. And so we'll be working on that in second quarter of this year as part of the budget. And as we get into the summertime to make sure we at least have each of those on a track to update to keep pace with inflation where we can.
Brett, sorry, on the stabilization of reserves, I can't remember how we establish sort of ceilings for our different reserves, or if we even do. Or do we have any consideration of reducing our contributions to reserves as they start to approach, I don't know what we define as comfortable, but as we start to really catch up to where we were in the past, so that we're driving more of that into operations?
Yeah, so that's a good point. And so we didn't establish a cap on them. We'd established a minimum and a target. And so those are, those languages are kind of set there for minimums is what we really want to avoid, obviously going into the minimum. And that's where you have to start really kind of getting creative and or, you know, cutting funding or having spending freezes to make sure we keep our minimums in place. The target language is mostly there, I don't want to call it a ceiling, but it's a place that you know you're comfortable, right? And so you want to structure rate studies and our budgets to get to the targets. If we've meet, if we've met our target in those areas, then I would say I'm agreeing with you in the sense that then we don't need to fund them anymore. And we can kind of reinvest those funds if they're available into operations or capital for that matter. And I think I did present kind of on maybe two or three finance committees ago, that we have largely replenished reserves back to where we were in pre-drought. And we do have an update, update from the auditor coming up here in the next financial committee meeting. But that should allow us in the next two-year cycle not to have to contribute at least to the unrestricted reserve as much. I think we'll still contribute to the Water Supply Project Reserve, but the unrestricted project reserve will probably not need additional funding. So that should free up a little bit of funding for other areas.
So over the next few months, we'll be bringing the two-year budget to the board ultimately for board adoption, right? And this is, our budget's on our two-year cycle, the rate's on a four-year cycle. So this is a second two-year budget in the four-year rate cycle, right? So as Brett noted, the revenue stream is capped based on the adoption of the rates from the board. So we'll be, staff is currently developing it. We'll be bringing, you know, drafts to the board as we work through it. We aren't expecting significant changes or, you know, it's going to support the annual work plan that we're developing with you today and our ongoing work. So that effort will happen over the next few months, presume adoption around May, something like that. And that two-year budget would be effective this coming July, the first year of the two-year budget.
Okay, so objective two, under the, under the fiscal responsibility section is for object, for a fair, equitable, and proportional rates. And, you know, part of that is our legal requirements. We have to, you know, strive to do that when we, when we undertake a rate study and we have rate, rate recommendations. But there's also best practices around that we can do to make sure we're not inadvertently subsidizing one area or the other, and then also to minimize where we can the impact on existing customers. So the top two are checkmarked here because those are underway. And then the, the second two, item C and item D, will be part of the next rate setting process. So they are more routine, I should say, the 2027 rate setting process piece is there. We will go out and we'll work with a consultant to do a, a study of our existing streams and revenues. And then we'll also kind of overlay that expenditure plan and find out, you know, where the best balance is there. But that'll be in 2027. And so in terms of the items for this year's work plan, it's A and B on here, and that's a connection fee study. Connection fee study, we've completed the actual study itself. We're getting final legal review right now. We'll bring it to the board in the first quarter here this year for our recommended structure going forward, for your consideration to approve. The idea with connection fee studies is we just want to make sure we're, you know, fully capturing the costs of new development in the district. And so if you don't kind of update those, you know, fees and studies along the way, you end up having to use rate funding for capital projects. Whereas if you use connection fee studies, you can kind of get the, at least a little bit of contribution from the new development to help fund your capital program. So it should offset some of the impact to our existing rate base if we have a more robust connection fee structure. And as, as your board may remember, with the connection fee study this year, we're trying to really standardize our overall structure to make it more consistent with how other jurisdictions do it. And also to where we can, you know, maximize the revenue, at least get full cost recovery in some of the areas where we know our replacement costs are increasing or more expensive than they were at the last study. So connection fee study is complete. It'll come to the board here in the next couple of weeks for final recommendations. And then on the flip side of that, we have a low-income program. And what that is, is it's using non-rate revenue the district makes. And so again, we can't just, you know, unilaterally subsidize any part of our customer base. But if you have non-rate revenues, you can use those for discretionary purposes. And so we have a very robust and very generous low-income program as it is now. And so what we're looking for there is, first of all, we took a look and to decide, can we be even more generous or a more robust program? And when we scanned around the other agencies, we really are so far, you know, on one side of the pendulum there in terms of, you know, low barrier to entry and high benefit overall, that there's really not much more room to expand that. We are pretty close to the max on our non-rate revenue as well. So there's not a lot more money we can necessarily give away. However, we can be a little bit more focused in who participates and how we have them participate. And so we're trying to, number one, do more outreach with some of our community partners to make sure we're getting, you know, at least the word out and people know they're available, that the program is available to them. And then secondly, our staff's going to look at, you know, are there some limitations we may want to put on for customers, maybe that technically qualify, but maybe we, we can start to kind of limit some of the benefits here or there if, if it's starting to look like they, they may not, you know, be the ideal target customer base there. And what I'm getting at there is that, you know, really, in order to qualify for our program, we're kind of, we have crude, you know, tools in the sense it's just your tax returns. And there's a wide variety of the way tax returns can look coming in. And so some people may show a loss or kind of, you know, low income on taxes, but you can, there's other ways to determine whether or not they're, you know, in need of financial support. And so we're going to look at that and maybe find out if there may be some appropriate caps to put on. And in that case, we can redirect some of those funds into a more robust program for those that need it. And so that'll be the idea we're looking at here over the summer and into the fall.
Great. And Brett, thanks for the, the deeper dive in the low-income program. It's going to be pretty important as we move forward. Back to item A, the connection fee study. How quickly do you think if the board approves the recommendation that we get it implemented?
And so typically, I think it takes a two-week reading period, if I remember correctly. We have to put it out there for a public notice for two weeks. And then we can determine, assuming the board has voted, we can determine the effective date, basically anytime after the two-week reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Brett, Brett on? Do you need it?
I'm going to.
All right, I'm going to go first. Brett, Brett, just on the, the low-income program evaluation. I guess this brings me back, you know, I've been, I've been trying to, you know, I keep bringing up water budget-based rate setting. And I don't know much about it, so it'd be great to, to learn more. But I'm wondering, you know, in that, is there an opportunity also to further refine? So if somebody is excessively spending water beyond what we think is a reasonable budget, that may also reduce their eligibility for a low-income program. I know we don't have that currently, but it's some, maybe another consideration for water-based, budget-based rate setting.
Definitely. And I'm hearing what you're saying. It gets pretty tricky as we get into non-rate revenue and low-income side, and then rate revenue on a water budget side, right? And I know water budgets are a little bit, I don't want to say the word experiment, but they're certainly new in the 218 world. And I think there's still legal challenges and legal tests going in around some of the structures there. So, I mean, I think we want to be creative. We want to definitely look into what our options are. And that's what we'd be looking for in a consultant this next time around, is to really help us understand, you know, where the legal framework is there, where, where our options are and what we can do, to your point, to kind of modify or at least kind of play within the rules well enough to incentivize, you know, good water use as well as, you know, not necessarily, you know, not subsidize those that we can avoid that for, right? So that's kind of a nuanced answer, but you know, between non-rate revenue on one side, that's mostly unrestricted, and then rate revenue under 218, I think that's what we're going to be looking to the consultant to help us understand is where's our, our leeway within that. I think that's what we're going to be looking to the consultant to help us understand is where's our leeway within that. For the, for the water budgets. We did only in passing, I think, you know, he's aware, or the firm was aware of a couple of places in Southern California that had implemented that. And I think, is my memory certainly correct? Yeah, he, in our discussions, and I'm happy to have Jared or Molly hopping if you want to, but my discussions with him are more about, he's seen them go in in Southern California. He was waiting to see how the courts were going to kind of treat some of those cases. He, I think, anecdotally, I think he was surprised that some of them were able to go in because they're somewhat antithetical to 218 principles. But they hadn't fully been challenged to the courts yet. So he was just awaiting to see how those were going to play their way through. And I'm not sure that I've seen a final result on any of those cases. I know the tiered rates are facing challenges and so that we have tiered rates here, the district. And so that becomes a little difficult for us just on the tier side. And water budgets become kind of another, you know, leap beyond that in the 218 world in terms of fairness and proportionality and the true cost of water. So I think at the end of the day, it's going to be incumbent on us to prove there's a cost nexus to how we, you know, kind of apply those water budgets. And then again, we'll be looking for kind of any, any new developments in state law or case law that can help us kind of find out where those boundaries are. No.
That means it's not working.
That are coming in because I can only imagine how difficult it must be for an individual to come in and say, I need help. So, you know, I, I hear you and I do emphasize with your side of it too. But on the flip of it, you know, I think we really need to do whatever we can do for someone who has the courage to come in and say, I'm pinned against the wall. I need some help if you can help me.
Yeah. And I definitely understand that. And our staff works to approve everybody streamlined on the way in. So I guess when I'm talking more about limiting our program, it's more kind of in review and retrospect after the fact, if we have a way that's fair and legal to do so. But right now, as it stands, our practice is to try to expedite any requests to be in the low-income program and to essentially give the benefit of the doubt to the applicant. And then after the fact, we can kind of take a deeper dive and, you know, to the extent we have resources, we can start to try to find a reasonable cap, but we're not doing that yet. So I hear you. Okay, so objective three, cost-effective business processes. We're doing quite a bit here and a lot of this is more behind the scenes. But as you can see, each of those are checkmarked. So we have, you know, motions in action on each of these initiatives. The first one there is very much internal. It's our enterprise, enterprise resource planning system or kind of enterprise software SAP. As you've probably heard me and our IT manager speak in the last year or so, you know, we're on about a 20-year-old system. It's out of life, out of support. And so we are working right now already on different components of it. We've split it into phases. And so we're working right now on a phase zero, which is going to be the kind of internal HR payroll side of things to get that moving. Cause it's the most kind of straightforward module within SAP and it works backwards and forwards with the old version. So we can kind of still straddle the old technology for a year or two. So we're working on that right now and I'll be bringing an item to the board in the next two or three weeks to identify a system integrator for that first phase of SAP. We're essentially moving right after that into most likely the billing system on SAP after that. And then the third area will be our work order and kind of our internal maintenance management systems. And so we have a lot of work to do there. A lot of that is very much internal and configurations. But, you know, as we kind of go through the modules, they'll get more and more kind of impactful on the way out to the organization. So we're, we're kind of getting up to speed now. We've got the team in place and we've got a good kind of initial momentum. But it is going to be a two to three-year project by the time it's all said and done, if not longer. And it's not cheap. I think the new software models, you know, they're, they're different price structure and they're, you know, much more robust than they were 20 years ago. And they're also more costly. So we are kind of navigating that and trying to find the best kind of combination of value and functionality within SAP right now. But it's an exciting project. I mean, it really is, you know, I think talking to the different work groups in the district, it's, our SAP system right now is almost more of a hindrance than not. I mean, those that can use it can use it, but it's not easy for new employees to learn. It's not easy to get data out of. It's hard to get trending data out of. And so I think we have so much great data here at the district, you know, whether it's, you know, on our water use side or our infrastructure side or on our customer billing side. We want to be able to get that out and use it, use it for decision-making and use it for kind of long-term planning. And so, you know, the longer we go without doing that, the harder and harder it is to be able to kind of use the data we have. And we spend more of our time just fixing the system and not enough time utilizing it going forward. So anyway, I'm excited for that. It is behind the scenes for now, but it will be coming more and more to the board and to the, to the district in terms of the different modules that affect people's day-to-day work. External resources and evaluating the opportunities there that can improve our operational efficiencies. We've had a couple of examples of that, you know, kind of internally in some pilot projects. We're also, you know, especially in Sean's division in the watershed, we are working collaboratively with the fire foundry and the CCNB. Engineering has had some nice pilot projects to try to find out ways, I think they mentioned it earlier, the balance between consulting for projects and using staff time for projects. So really wherever we can kind of take advantage of inefficiency, whether it's the water quality lab, watershed, engineering, we're trying to do that. Knowing that, you know, a full-time staff of the district is not cheap either and it's a long-term commitment. And some of these other, you know, services can be handled more efficiently by the market and or by volunteers and or by partnerships. And so that's an ongoing effort. I mean, we'll have that checked every year that we speak to you. But it is something we talk about each and every year internally and we'll kind of make adjustments piecemeal as we go through in the budget to reflect that. Item C is triple A, I mean, double A or better quality rating. That's consistent with our fiscal policies. We did get upgraded last year slightly and then actually I'm happy to share with the board that we just recently got upgraded again to double A plus. So we went through a review with, with Fitch over the last couple of weeks. And then they just put out a press release this Wednesday, I believe it was, last Wednesday, kind of solidifying our next step on the upgrade process. So they're recognizing the changing financial structure of the district and the kind of the stronger rate revenues and the stronger commitment to capital. And that shows in their ratings of us. And so that's good news there and we hope to continue kind of our, you know, plotting forward each and every year, getting a little bit better in terms of our overall credit rating. Online and electronic bill payments, that is also underway. And so I'll be bringing an item to the operations committee this week to talk about that. And so we've been, you know, working on that the last couple of months and now we're getting ready to, to really pull the trigger, assuming the board is okay with that. And so the idea there is that our, you know, current online bill payment system is pretty, you know, crude and rudimentary. And it's not necessarily something, you know, that we're super proud of in the sense of, you know, our customers don't necessarily find it to be very helpful. It's not modern and we end up spending more time behind the scenes, you know, helping people navigate it than it does automate for us. So we're excited internally for an upgrade in that, in that area. I think the products that we're looking at right now, we'll be recommending are a significant upgrade from the customer perspective. And they also will be a little bit more cost-effective as well. So we're looking forward to improving kind of all three areas there, both, you know, behind the scenes to our customers and on the bottom line. So that'll be coming your way in the next couple of days. And I think the idea there is to go live at the end of quarter two. So April 1st will be the goal there. And then finally, streamline.
Sorry, Brett, just one interruption. On the online and electronic bill payments, does that include changes to the automated, automated bill payment system?
Yes, it will change. The entire system will be a new vendor. There'll be a new process. It should be much easier, much more streamlined, much more modern in the sense of payments that they will take. But this may be what you're getting at. There will be a slight impact to our customer base in the sense of re-enrolling into a new system. And kind of having a new link if you have one saved or whatever it may be, just.
I think, you know, the one, one challenge I've noted with the automated system is that I don't get through my bill anymore. All the inserts and information that a paper bill provides. And I don't know if there's any ability to include some of that as with the notification that, you know, that does go out through the automated system, but something, you know.
So I don't know if I can speak specifically to what you're getting now in your system, but I do know that the product we'll be recommending is much more. It's easier for staff to kind of adjust what the customer is seeing and to on the fly make changes to that. Right now, we're really on an older kind of platform that is much more print-based. And so the kind of model starts on the print side and, you know, they can kind of reproduce it online if they need to. Now we're starting more of a technology company that's more flexible and is able to take kind of more on-the-fly changes rather than having to have that kind of process back and forth of testing. So it will be improved. And so the final item here on objective three is just to streamline our application for discount programs and leak adjustments. And Director Russell mentioned this earlier. I think what we're trying to do is trying to, you know, make it easier for customers to take advantage of the programs that we do offer. And part of that's just in our internal processing is making sure that, you know, we're clear to the customers what's required and that we're essentially, you know, approving them, you know, streamlined if we can. And if we have more questions, we're being clear about the follow-up and the timeline to get approved. Cause I think we had seen some issues where it had been two to three months of a delay before those got approved. And so we're really making an effort with our customer service staff is, you know, turn those in on a weekly basis and make sure we're at least getting people enrolled. And kind of giving the customers the benefit of the doubt, at least on the upfront, on the way here. And leak adjustments as well. It's a, it's a difficult process, but when you find a leak in your house and, you know, they can quickly add up to thousands of dollars. And so I think what we're trying to do is be, be a little more mindful of the impact on the customers and being a little more mindful of the fact that, you know, they're making, as long as they're making the repairs at their house, at their property. And as long as they're coming to us quickly in a timely fashion, we're trying to support them in terms of getting their credit immediately and then kind of working through the rest of the details after the fact. So we're doing our best to streamline that and make it as easy as possible on the customers.
Director Kush, just in response to your question on bill inserts, because for me, I asked Adrian, it was a interesting question that we do benefit from the paper bills because little to no additional cost, we use it for inserts. And what if folks that aren't getting paper bills get currently in the electronic bill, there's a link to that information that's posted. But I think you might not have noticed it in what the new system will be able to highlight that sort of stuff in a way that it does capture at least the attention of folks and the opportunity to click to the links.
Yeah, that's great to hear because it doesn't jump out currently.
And so moving on to objective four here, I think it's similar to other objectives. We have a pretty good start on here. We have three of the initiatives already underway. The other two will be coming, you know, as, as we need them. But the idea here is we're always seeking, seeking alternative revenue sources to minimize the impact on our current rate payers or future increases for that matter. So a lot of this work just kind of comes as opportunities arise and a lot of it comes as a result of the grant program, kind of continued, kind of work in that area to identify areas and also to make sure we're getting earmarks for funding. And so as I'll show you on the next slide here, within our word of funding for water supply projects. We're continuing on an ongoing basis to engage with the USA CE in the effort to get funding appropriations through the, from Marin water projects. And on that one, I think we're looking at the next fourth quarter as the next milestone that we hope to be able to get some news on that front in terms of state and federal grants. We're always looking for projects that align with our, with our projects here within the district in terms of phases and in terms of near-term projects. The issue there, I think a lot of times is that, you know, some of the projects that we do, it doesn't always align to the full funding scale of some of these opportunities. So what we try to do is find the pieces of them or, you know, phases of them that do align well and then take advantage of that as we go. And I think that the watershed's done a really good job of that as we talked about in the last section with habitat restoration. And so we'll continue that effort as well. I think we are looking to hire a new grants manager in Sean's group now. So we'll be looking to that person to really help push this forward in the next year or so. And then leveraging regional partnerships and the board brings this up a lot. But I think, you know, we know that we're not alone here and we know that some of the issues we face are not unique to Marin. And so, you know, whether it's on the wildfire prevention area in terms of how we're partnering with the Marin wildfire prevention authority. One TAM on the mountain, the county of Marin is facing many issues like we do as well as cinema water. So we've talked about these in many of the areas already, but I think the idea there is to continue leveraging and deepening those partnerships and recognition that we're not facing this alone. And that in many cases, we can increase our opportunity for funding by working across the different jurisdictions.
You know, we, in, in previous meetings, we've spoken a little bit about, I think it was in 2014 that there was a water bond passed by the state to fund, I believe, water storage projects, reservoir development. And a lot of that money was going to go to the Los Ficaros expansion, which didn't, which fell through. I'm guessing there's a big effort to redirect it now to the sites reservoir. But I'm just wondering if we've done any proactive investigation to see if we have any eligibility or alignment with resources from that water bond, particularly if they're having trouble spending it.
I would, I would tag on to the most recent climate change proposition that was just passed in the fall too, in terms of that funding availability.
So for the Director Kush, the water bond that you're mentioning, that was written specifically for like four reservoir projects. And if your project was not written in there, you were not eligible. So there's not a way for us to get into that one to shake loose funding. The climate bond though, I think is going to be one of the areas where that really brings funding to all the agencies that we've worked with in the past for environmental projects as well as water resource projects at the state level.
And our new, our latest, our newest customer can't help us change access to the water bond, I guess. Who's going to ask, right?
Okay, so final objective here under fiscal responsibility is financial transparency. And again, as I mentioned at the beginning, that a lot of this is more to make sure we're doing the right things on our side to kind of encourage, you know, more public trust. And also just to, to, to allow for a better, you know, public discussion and public review of especially the finances, but in general operations. And so these are all five underway, as you can see there with the checkmarks. I think Adrian or Ben had mentioned the online customer tool improvements that was completed last year. And so that really is a good way for customers to be able to predict, you know, what's going to happen in the future, either with the current bill and how they can save, you know, what maybe saving water will do to their bill. Also to plan ahead for the next year if there are planned rate increases in the future so that we have those up in various versions to be able to kind of cover each year and give different scenarios in each of those. And Adrian did a really good job of finding a nice, easy interface there to work with on our website. The other items there are largely complete. So bi-annual fiscal policy review, we completed that last year. We'll do it again. It's, that's why they say complete and ongoing. We kind of, we do it, you know, every couple of years. So we looked at our fiscal policies in 2024. We'll do it again in 2025 or 2026. Quarterly financial summary publication. The idea there is I know we come to the FAC meetings once a month and we provide the financial summaries, but those kind of get buried in the meeting minutes or in the agenda documents. And so we're putting those out, you know, a couple more layers on the website. So they're easier for customers to find on a quarterly basis. And so they're all there, you know, looking backwards if we need to look at them going backwards. We also obviously post our budgets and our financial audits each year on our website as well. Those are a little bit more complicated to look through. So we're trying to find a good summary there for the quarterly financials. We do do regular internal and external financial audits. We just completed the external audit in November. The auditor will be coming to give a report on that at the next finance committee. We're also anticipating more kind of internal audits just on our current practices and our current policies as we get into the SAP project. Because so many of our financial practices are kind of codified in the system that we use and in terms of, you know, where the workflow goes, who approves what, where the limits are at, you know, that kind of a thing. So a lot of that we're going to be addressing as part of the SAP upgrade or modernization project. And we'll bring in some consultants from the GFOA to help give us best practices there for anything that may have changed in the last 20 years since SAP was set up last time. And I'm expecting quite a few things to change there just in terms of internal practice and internal process. And then finally, e-proactive communication for grants and investment opportunities. Again, a lot of this is handled by Adrian's team, but we are trying to make sure whenever we do have significant milestones made on either outside funding or grants or, you know, capital projects that we are putting them into news releases and outreach messaging and making sure the public knows that we're working hard to get, you know, outside funding in and to be able to kind of turn those investments around into, you know, key infrastructure here within the district. So a lot of those are ongoing as indicated there, but they are kind of core practices we want to keep on top of mind as we, as we go through each and every year. Just to make sure we're doing the right thing and make sure we're educating ourselves and the public for all the activities that we do on the finance side. And so that does complete my area of the presentation here under fiscal responsibility. I'm happy to answer any more questions the board may have.
Great, Brett. Thank you very much. Board comments or questions, Director Mayor?
Well, I'll second Larry's request to have, you know, deeper thoughtful outreach to folks that may be able to benefit from our grants. And maybe a little bit more of a review of how many people take it on and, and how we can support that in a better way. And I appreciate your, your thoughtfulness about our ongoing rate review. And I appreciate your thoughtfulness about our ongoing rate review and keeping it as tight as possible and also looking out for future boards so they don't get stuck like we did, where we had to make a big adjustment to make up for previous year's shortfalls.
Director Russell?
I found your comments a little disconcerting about people having difficulties with the SAP system. Are you sure riding the right horse going forward?
I think any system is difficult to work with, you know, over the, you know, long term. And when once they're out of, you know, once it's been 20 years since implementation, it's hard to kind of keep up with all the new features of a system. And as you may imagine, any any system that you have that was, you know, on your computer 20 years ago is probably not the easiest to use anymore. And really what it is, it's
never quickened. It still works fine.
Some still do work pretty well. But I think the idea is, you know, every once in a while, you need to kind of re kind of train and retool and relaunch a lot of these programs. And, you know, you get the newer generation of employees that come in, they're expecting things to look and feel a certain way because that's how they've always looked and, you know, looked and felt to them. And some of us that have been around, you know, SAP for years and years, you know, it's a little easier for us to navigate. You kind of forget the fact that you're reading things in German, you forget that you're looking at icons and that you kind of know, you know, transaction codes for everything. And you get some new employee and trying to show them how to do it. And they're like, what the heck is this? Right? So some of it's just being more modern and then kind of look and feel things. Some of it is just that kind of ongoing commitment to maintaining maintenance and maintaining training and kind of, you know, re-upping it each and every year. Because as you have people that are moving up through the organization, maybe they're, you know, line staff at the beginning, then they're a supervisor, then they're a manager, they're using different parts of the system at that point, where you get people promoted to be an analyst and they have to really take a deep dive into there. So some of it's just the kind of the natural churn when you have a new system, it's the training kind of refresh that you get there. And some of it really is the functionality. So to your point about riding the right horse, when we looked into the different systems available to us, it was kind of the decisions, either tier one systems or kind of the tier two systems. Tier two systems were not very functional. So you have your choices of your oracles and your SAPs, they're all kind of funky in their own way. And they all kind of take a, you know, in an ecosystem and a kind of an environment to kind of learn that whole, you know, technology structure. And so the fact that we have 20 years invested in the SAP was kind of a big piece of that, too, is we have not only staff that have been trained in SAP language, but we also have, you know, an environment of consultants to help us out with that. And so it seemed to be less of a lift, at least at this point, when we have a two-year window to go that way. And that's not to say that SAP is perfect. You know, there is challenges for sure. But I think I'm hoping with training, with refreshing kind of the overall knowledge base, that we can at least be able to get the information out, you know, effectively going forward.
That's an interesting comment that you made about the people changing outside. I never really thought about that one, that they're expecting certain things and when it's not that way. However, I will tell you this, I had to pass a German test for my PhD. And I used to do my English grammar in German because it's much more straightforward in German than it is in English. There's no question about them and they and all that kind of stuff. In German, it's straightforward. So there are some advantages to the German language.
Director Kush?
Okay, thank you.
Brett, appreciate the update. One of the questions I had was, and it might be too much of a dive right now, but we're going to be diving pretty quickly into a two-year budget process. And I think one of the key components for that is going to be funding of a large water supply project. Can you give us a kind of an understanding of how we expect to blend those two together to get towards a budget review? Is that going to be approved in this? Would you expect it to be approved of this budget funding for a large scale project?
So I'll take that in a couple of pieces. I think, you know, my understanding where we're at is we're still kind of trying to figure out the preferred approach and preferred project path going forward. And there's still a lot more that's probably unknown with each project than there is that's known as we start to refine cost estimates and the implementation concerns and the yields and whatnot. So I don't personally anticipate us picking the project in three or four months and saying it's funded now. What I do think we can do is similar to what Director Smith was saying, is incremental changes to make sure the funding is available when it's needed and kind of maintaining flexibility where we can. And so what I mean by that is I mean that, you know, right now, we have the funding for the water supply roadmap. That's about $10 million a year. Plus, we have the funding for the reserve, the water supply reserve. It's two and a half million a year. Plus, we have planned debt service for some large projects in the future that are part of the rate plan that we went out with. So those three areas could all be combined into essentially one big debt service, right? So we could make the choice that, you know, maybe we're not going to take on a Smith-Saddle type project, we're not going to take on the clarifiers project, but that room within our capital budget can be redirected towards funding for a water supply project. And same within the roadmap, once you stop studying, you know, 10 different options, we can focus all of our efforts on just one. And so what I would say is that will get us a big part of the way towards kind of that, you know, I think you guys have probably seen the ranges of costs. Not all of them are right up front, and some of them have longer tails. But, you know, the middle range in some of those projects is attainable, I guess is kind of what I'm saying, within the current rate structure. And once we find out a better idea for what the actual project will be, then we have to start creating the timeline for how we build up to the funding for that type of a project, knowing that there'll be phases on the way in, there'll be, you know, sequo, there'll be more studies, there'll be design phase and those kind of things. So it won't be an overnight type thing necessarily, but I think we can put ourselves in a really good position to be able to minimize kind of that last mile or that last kind of lift to get there. And we can also do things like we're talking about to have everything else taken care of and everything else kind of in a good position to where that's not our last dime going towards the water supply project. We have other things that are still kind of keeping us afloat with flexibility there. So that's my goal is to have a balanced approach to this and to keep the options open and flexibility open while we're still kind of working our way towards what is going to be largely an expensive project.
Great. And appreciate the approach, the flexibility approach. And for me, and probably for the board, understanding where our limits are financially as we start to make any decision, whether it's water supply or infrastructure like that, it's going to be really important. So thank you.
Yeah, what we are planning is we bring the next discussion on the water supply roadmap as we move towards potentially selecting a preferred project to move into sequin design that will revisit, we did have a couple discussions with the board, but in context, as we move closer and closer, this issue understandably becomes more and more significant and the need for the board to really understand different funding approaches on different sized projects in context of decision making and selection. So we will bring it back and talk to the board about, okay, within the confines of what Brett just mentioned, the different funding sources, what that would potentially look like with today's interest rates, maybe if they go down a bit, up a bit, and just give the board a feel of, for example, okay, is it up to what, a $250 million project, for example, potentially could be funded within the existing rate structure? And here's how. So we'd want to bring that along, of course, with the delta, if a larger project is selected, what that would look like in terms of impact potentially on the rates.
That'll be very helpful. Thank you.
Maybe just one comment on that. Brett, you noted that for some of these, the total, the upfront cost may not, you know, we may be phasing the investments in the infrastructure. So some, you know, understanding of where we have opportunities to phase investments would also be helpful at that time.
Any additional board comments? Great. Brett, thank you very much for that. I think we're ready to move on to our, oh, sorry, Terry, thank you for reminding me.
All right. Larry Menakis, please.
Yeah, I'm just Let's channel Roger Roberts and go to Objective Two, Fair Equitable and Proportional Rates. And this is Roger, Conduct a Connection Fee Study to Fully Capture the Costs of Current and Future Infrastructure Needs. And this is Roger. We have to pay for the true cost of water. And this is what he said over and over again. And then I just want to point out number D, which is Implement a Robust Outreach Plan Throughout the 2027 Rate Setting Process to Inform Customers About Proposed Changes. And I would suggest starting now and really getting people ready to understand that infrastructure is expensive and costs are going up and that water is not any longer going to be cheap for us. I know people are complaining about water rates now, but it's, we all know it's a reality. Utilities are going up and it's just a fact of life. Thank you.
No additional comments. Thank you. Time to move on to the fifth and final goal.
Okay, so Goal Five, Organizational Excellence. This goal is really about the people, both our customers and our workforce here at the district. Staff are the district's most important asset. And so it's important that we retain and recruit and develop a successful staff so that they're able to efficiently perform their jobs and be successful in delivering to our customers the service that they pay for, that they expect and that they deserve. And so we've really defined this goal into four objective areas, organizational culture and values, customer experience, industry engagement, growth and leadership, and technology innovation and process improvements. And so looking at Objective One, Organizational Culture and Values, we have a lot of work identified in this area. There's 10 five-year action items that were identified in the strategic plan. And this area is really focused around retaining and recruiting a diverse and skilled workforce, and then also creating, inviting functional workspaces and tools for our staff, as well as creating and fostering positive relationships in the organization, and also developing our staff to ensure that there's ongoing learning and exceptional skill sets throughout the district and all of our different expertise areas. So I'm not going to go through each of those, but we'll go right into the action items. We are planning for work in all 10 of those action items this year. And first is a focus on recruitment collateral. So in last year's work plan, we developed kind of a suite of new recruitment materials and communications, worked really closely with HR to kind of take a fresh perspective to the materials that we are using to try to recruit a diverse applicant pool. And so now that we've done that, kind of the next focus is looking at our employment webpage and seeing what we can do there to really enhance some of the features that are there, just improve the navigation, but also show a little bit more of our workplace culture as we can through the website. And so we have some ideas, our team does, for how to do that. And we'll be working with HR on that this year. And then I'm going to turn it over to Vicki to handle a few of the next couple of action items as they're really focused on HR initiatives.
Thank you, Adrian. So our, again, as Adrian mentioned, we want to maintain a workforce that's highly motivated, connected to the mission, and providing optimal services to our ratepayers. We also want to bring in a workforce, create a pipeline for our workforce. So what we're doing is we're partnering with Baywork. And Baywork is a consortium of water organizations throughout the East Bay, mostly, there are some on the North Bay. And we're trying to create a North Bay consortium here for us so that we can tap in, better tap into our community, tap into the schools, community colleges, community-based organizations. So with the Baywork, we were really involved in that organization, and we are going to be hosting a workshop on wheels in the spring. And that's going to bring attention to Marin Water as an employer. And we want to showcase Marin Water as an employer of choice. And so we're going to continue our work with Baywork and also continue our outreach within the community. When we recruited for the Ranger Trainee Program, we developed a robust outreach program. And so we've been building on that. And that gives us an opportunity to have touchpoints within the community. So we've been attending career fairs, like with Marin City, Canal Alliance, we are connected with them, Marin Multicultural Center. So we have a nice group of people who we reach out to. We send them weekly digest, basically saying we have recruitment, we have recruitments going on, and this is the area. And then when we develop our recruitment plans, we have a plan, an outreach plan. Who are we going to contact directly when we launch this recruitment? Just to make sure they're aware that, you know, we sent you this information, make sure you share this with your community. So we're really focusing on community outreach in this immediate area. So once we get people on board, we also have an onboarding program. So onboarding starts before the person starts working here. We're working with the managers and developing them in terms of getting ready for their new employee, what they need to do prior to the person coming on board day one. And then from there, we actually have a toolkit for each manager, for each employee. And that toolkit has touchpoints. Obviously, you're communicating with them more often than the touchpoints that we have here, but we are making sure that you have these check-ins, 30, 60, 90 day check-ins, and it goes on throughout the whole year. And in that toolkit, it's very specific things that the manager supervisor needs to do with the employee to ensure that they have the resources that they need to do their job, that they're engaged, and that, you know, finding out, are there any areas of concern that they can help the employee with in terms of developing and being successful in the position? So that's what we're doing. And effective onboarding actually does help with retention. So, and that's why we're really focusing on that. So we do now have a one-year onboarding program thanks to our new training and development analysts. So we went on to that. Another important initiative that we completed was our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Training. And I did give the board an update on that program where we did, we had a survey, a pilot program. And from those two items and some feedback from employees, we developed a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Training. It was a three and a half hour interactive training. We got great reviews on it, employees enjoyed it. And we're going to continue to roll out Diversity Equity Inclusion Training or touchpoints as we have new hires come on board. And then part of the onboarding program does incorporate some diversity and equity and inclusion in that program. So more, a more robust training is we're looking at a five-year training program. We actually have developed a draft of our five-year training program. The training program, in developing the training program, we started with a organization needs assessment. And that was meeting with the division directors, getting feedback from them and their managers on what the organization needs. We also focused on employee groups to get feedback from employee groups. So we did an initial organization needs assessment. We created the training plan. And now we're going back to the division directors to make sure we didn't miss anything that was part of the assessment, or if there's anything else that they could think of, and then what are their specific needs for their division. Our training plan starts with, well, it includes rather, leadership training. And that's training, like, you know, as we all know, leadership training is motivating employees and things like that. We start with a baseline training, and then over the five years, we build on that baseline training. And that's what the map, the leadership training map is for. In addition to the leadership training, we have management training as well. And so that is designed for things like budgeting. As Brett mentioned, somebody may move into a new position, they may promote into a new position. They may need training on some SAP modules, they may training on budgeting, training on the memorandum of understanding, which is our MOU with the with the union that we negotiated in 2023. So that's the management module. Then in addition to that, we have an administrative module, but that's open to anyone. And that would be your baseline Microsoft suite trainings, like Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Visio. And we would have beginner, intermediate, and advanced trainings. We're looking at soft skills, communication, customer service, emotional intelligence, you know, just we're building on all of these things throughout the year. And so that's our training program that we have put into place right now. Or it's not in place, it's drafted, we're going to be launching soon. So, and then employee recognition and appreciation. Did Adrian, did you want to pick up on?
Yeah, I'll take that back. Thank you. All right.
Sorry, Adrian, just before we move on. I do see the HR announcements on social I do see the HR announcements on social media, the recruitment announcements. So I've seen a few environmental planner, legislative and grant specialists. These are all, the ones I've been noticing are sort of mid-level. Do we have a lot of opportunity for entry-level positions that, you know, that the Bayworks collaboration would really support?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We have our assistant utility maintenance worker. And we pretty much advertise for that position probably maybe once a year, maybe. That's in Darren's group. And it's, and it sounds like a lot, but what happens is they actually promote a lot. So they start as an assistant utility maintenance worker, they move to a utility worker one. Then we have a flex staffing program. If they meet an objective criteria, they can go to a two level, from the one to the two. And some of them, all of the supervisors, I believe now, have promoted into that position. So whenever you have that movement, it creates the opportunity at the assistant utility maintenance worker level. We actually, in fact, filled 10 positions recently, six of them were internal because we do have robust opportunities. So while we do, while we are putting this roadmap together for training, we do have some highly skilled employees in our organization and training. The departments are really good at training employees. But we also want to wrap around, wrap that with the soft skills training that's available. And also look at the skills training that's going on in the departments and see if there are any gaps or any opportunities that we can fill in with our training program. So. That is in operations, the assistant utility, in terms of, oh, laborers, yeah. Oh, the, yeah, they are part of the flexible staff program. So they actually, we just actually signed a promotion like two weeks ago for someone to move up from a treatment plant operator level to. That is a hard-to-fill position. Yes, we actually have one that we're recruiting for right now. And we just, we have to put a lot of energy into it. We have been able to get good candidates, but a lot of times we do need to bring them in at the entry level and develop them. Because it is a very hard-to-fill position and it's hard to get someone to move if they're established at another public sector organization and they have their seniority there and it's close to home, you know, so it's, yeah, so it is, that's a good question. It is very difficult. Yes. I believe it. I believe it. Yeah. It's a difficult position to fill. We've been successful, but it is, I think for most organizations, that is an area of vulnerability. Yes. Yes, we do. Yeah, we actually email. Yeah. Yeah, so we, we look at it, I mean, we run through the list. If we see somebody that we're not recruiting, we would delete them. Yeah, and then we also, so that list is always the state, right? We narrow it down by zip code and try to be targeted in our approach. Because then we're just bothering people who are not interested, so. Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry.
All right, so item F, employee recognition and appreciation programs. As part of developing our staff, we also want to celebrate their successes. And so this was an area identified in the strategic plan that we would focus on for this next year. The employee recognition committee will actually be taking on a refresh of that program. We actually, the committee members were able to collect input from staff at a recent event to get some feedback on the program in general. That'll go into some of the considerations the committee makes about changes to that program. And so we're looking forward to rolling that out in the spring.
On that, just a quick advertisement. We do have an upcoming winter employee recognition event. We did want to share the date with the board. We finally have it, Darren. Can you remind me, please?
This month on the 28th.
28th? So that's going to be hosted, what we're doing now is having divisions host these. Operations is going to host it. And as I understand, we'll have a demonstration on pipe tapping. So you all certainly are invited, as you always are, to our quarterly employee recognition. But if you're able to make it, you'll see a part of it. We're all looking forward to the demonstration on the pipe tapping. Yeah, it'll be in the yard.
And it's from seven to nine in the morning.
Darren, is it just me, but it's seven seems a little early. Not for you, not for you guys. All right.
6:30.
So continuing with objective one action items. So strengthening internal communication strategies is also high up on our list. And so we've got a couple of things identified for the year here. As Ben highlighted when he was reviewing 2024 accomplishments, we did launch the Employee Impact, our new internal newsletter this past year. And now we're looking at what else we can do with that to kind of take it a little further. And so we have some ideas for mobile device delivery of that publication. We want to just make sure that our staff are getting the publication in their hands, that they're reading the material. And with our Microsoft 365 suite coming online soon, there's actually some applications that can make that possible. And so we'll be exploring how we can do that, just to further the reach of that. And then another interesting thing we'll be doing is piloting some internal digital signboards around the district, kind of in strategic locations at work sites, just to disseminate information internally to our staff. And this could be everything from reminders about upcoming benefits enrollment, as well as communicating if it's a red flag warning day and we're closing down the watershed to vehicle traffic or other weather advisories or important information that we'd want to disseminate. There are tools also through Microsoft 365 that actually would make this possible for us to do remotely. And is something that communications can work with all departments as they have important updates to put out, to put on those digital display screens. And so really, we're talking about smart TVs that are installed. This is really low-cost way to kind of have more timely information get out there to our staff that work offsite and aren't on email all day. And then moving into employee engagement and organizational improvements. So Ben had touched at the beginning on our new ripple committee that was formed last year and some of their accomplishments in 2024. And they'll be continuing to work through some of those items that were identified when they were formed as kind of key initiatives. The big first focus being that job shadowing program. And so we expect to hear more about that over the next several months. And then item I, workplace safety. Two areas of focus here for this next year. First is really looking at all of our existing safety programs and policies and evaluating where there may be room to enhance or improve in any of those areas. And then ensuring that our staff are adequately trained on all of the procedures that are written in our safety policies and programs. And then the second item is more focused on emergency preparedness and the role that staff have in an EOC if it were activated during an emergency. And managers went through a training just at the close of this past year on just our roles in the EOC, and that'll be expanding to additional staff. And we'll be looking at doing some simulated exercises in the EOC. That was touched on earlier in the day. And let's see, coming up with our initial incident action plan as well. And then moving into work facilities assessment. This one is already captured in Goal 2, Objective 1D. There's a couple of places throughout the plan where we've got some duplication. But Alex did mention we'll be completing the facilities master plan this year. And so work sites are rolled up into that as well. And then item K, staffing assessment. So staff are working on kind of a district-wide list of internal resource gaps that exist. And there are plans to present that to the board as part of the two-year budget process this year. I think I've reached the end. Yes, I'll pause there just for a minute.
I have a quick comment. It's great to hear about things like Ripple and working on the employee morale. It's really exciting. I have a thought about red flag, which I may have mentioned to you before. But it seems to me with the location of our flagpole, we should add a red flag on the flagpole. Can't hurt. And it would be easy and it, you know, it's right there on the freeway. People see it every day. Hopefully, we won't, we buy it and we never need it, but unlikely, I think. I have one more thought too, just a side issue. How are we doing with generator maintenance? We bought all those beautiful generators and are we keeping them? Yeah. I've been thinking about them a lot because it's partly with DWP issues. You can have the pump stations, but if you don't have power, they're not even much good, you know?
Yeah, I imagine, Darren, that like all new equipment we get, we go through the manufacturer recommendations on preventative maintenance. And that gets put into our maintenance work order system. So the PMs, the preventative maintenance, are automatically generated. Is that the case with these?
What do we do about fuel? I mean, do you keep fuel in or keep empty?
Yeah, as far as when they're deployed, like how we fuel them, we have several pickups.
No, no, when they're sitting.
Oh.
How do you keep the diesel from going bad? You don't.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what I'm worried about.
That's the challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, we try not to store too much diesel on them, but also want them ready to go for immediate deployment. But we haven't really had too many issues regarding the diesel going bad. So yeah, it's working out.
Unfortunately, you don't until you.
That's true. But as far as once they're deployed out in the field, we have several trucks with fuel tanks on them that we can fuel up as needed, especially in tighter locations.
I'm glad to hear that you're taking care of them.
Yeah, absolutely.
We bought 34 of them or something like that.
I think right now, we currently have 22. Some are newer than others. Yeah.
Yeah, bundle.
Yeah.
Sure, thanks for this report. I, I'd love to suggest that one of our finance meetings that is a full special board meeting would be reviewing the great work you're doing on culture and staff and hiring and open positions, et cetera. It's so important. And I think, you know, too often, it's just board, leadership team, and then we have a blind spot in everyone else. And in some ways, I think they have a blind spot to us. So the more we're able to interact with the staff, the better. Something I've been trying to do for two years here. And it's, it seems awkward, but I would love to meet as many people as possible in this organization. And anytime I've met with them, they appreciate it. And so that we don't have to be on these, you know, dais towers, but we can be human with them. So I'd love to have them a part of this. Do you have a survey again that you're going to repeat? Maybe I missed it. Is that, is that an annual thing so that we can view how we're doing over time?
Are you referring to engagement survey?
Yes.
We, we are doing another engagement survey. We don't have a date for it, but yeah, we are going to do.
Yeah, it'd be good to, I mean, it's the trajectory that's as important, if not more than the results of the last one. That's just a pinpoint, but how are we doing? And where can we do better? We'll help you guys manage better.
And I just want to also add something about, thank you, and about the Ripple Committee and how it interacts with the training program, the training part of it. So we, the Ripple Committee is very thoughtful, I'm sorry, Ripple Community Committee, very thoughtful about the employees and the needs of the employees. And one thing that came up was they suggested, and also division directors suggested this as well, some help around interview skills, right? We do have a lot of employees who promote here. And some employees show up very well in terms of their skills, but when it gets to the interview, they don't do so well in the interview process. And so what we're rolling out as part of our training and as part of feedback from Ripple, which is part of our engagement and giving and providing for the employees in the area where we need is interview training skills. So we have our training manager and our recruiting person, they're pairing up and they're actually going to be giving some presentations starting this month on interview skills. So that's, that's work in action and actually connecting to the needs of the employees as well. So I wanted to share that. I skipped over that, by the way, presentation. So this is an opportunity to bring it back in.
That's great to hear. And I think it's right on because, you know, they can be really skilled with their hands, but the mouth may not quite follow the hands. And I'm thinking, maybe we could have something like a file of typical questions for different job categories so that they could get an idea of what's coming. Because I can imagine some of them, I remember I was a meter reader for LA Water and Power, walked into the interview in high school and summer fill-in. And the first question the guy asked me was, five of them, they introduced themselves. What are our names?
Interesting.
Yeah. Now, I got three of them, but, which is probably three more than anybody else got. But, you know, because you get that, it comes in, you ask that thing and you just let it go. And, but those, you know, can be hard questions.
Yeah, it's speaking to, did you do your homework before you showed up? So that's part of the training.
Or did you listen?
Yeah, listening, showing up, doing your homework. And also, you know, you don't have to be humble in an interview. And I think that's a culture of some people and they feel like they need to be humble and that's not the time. So, so it's going to be a really good, we're looking, we're really excited about this. So it's going to be great.
All right, moving into objective two, focused on customer experience. This is really about, we do a lot with our customers. We have a lot of services, a lot of programs, resources that we offer. And so this five-year strategic objective is really about what can we do to work towards being best in class and service? And how can we enhance some of those things even more? And we have a number of action items in this objective as well. And I'll get right into the work plan on that. We are carrying forward everything and it's identified in the year two work plan. Beginning first with facilities programs, outreach, accessibility audit. This is kind of an ADA-focused component of our outreach. And well, and really our facilities as well. For year two, we are focused on our website accessibility and making some improvements there. We do have a large website project this year. We're transitioning to a new platform. Won't provide much of a different look to customers on the outside, but on the inside of how we manage the site, that will change to a new content management system. And as part of that, we are going to weave in some improvements to accessibility there just to make the website experience for those with visual impairments a little easier. So more to come on that. We'll also, sorry, moving into item B, key messaging, visual brand identity. There's a couple of items here for the work plan. One of them's a carryover from year one. We didn't quite get through all of the items in this, and so we'll be continuing it this year. But we're looking to develop kind of a new engaging outreach booth presence when we're out at events. We attend a number of events throughout the year, really focused in the spring, summer, fall time. And so we're really thinking about some of the initiatives going on with water efficiency or new enhanced turf rebate program and where there's some opportunity there to kind of have a better in-person experience engagement as we're talking through those programs. And also just so that our visual presence out at events is strengthened. We're looking to do the same at some of our lobbies. We have some new signage projects planned for the lobby. We have some new signage projects planned for the lobby of our administration building. So when customers walk in, you know, we're planning for big, beautiful pictures of the watershed and also some education on water's journey, where their water comes from, as well as some new messaging around water efficiency programs. And we'll be looking to do the same up at Watershed Sky Oaks office as well with things that are relevant to programs up there. And then second item in that area is update to the district's communications and branding guidelines. And we'll be working with all teams to ensure successful rollout of that. It's been a while since we've made updates to that, got on to those guidelines. We have a lot of new staff, so it was a good time to refresh, find areas where we need to do a little more, develop new templates, just strengthen some of our procedures around communications and outreach. And so looking forward to that. And I'll just actually tag on, Vicki had mentioned the, the new orientations that we're doing with staff through part of the expanded onboarding process. And I do get to participate in that and meet with the staff. And part of what we're doing is talking to them about branding and the importance of our brand and representing the district and giving them some background on what the logo itself means and the colors and why they were chosen and why the way it looks, why it looks the way it does. So that's been really nice to have that kind of first interaction with them and give them that education about the agency upfront. And then item C, geo-targeted customer communications. So this is kind of a cool project and we think we're going to be able to get it implemented this year. This is where we would be utilizing a new platform that would allow us to geo-target customers if there was a service interruption due to a main break in their area. There is benefit to this right now. Darren's teams are out there going door to door when that happens. That's not always ideal if the main break happens in the middle of the night or early in the morning, people may still be sleeping, but they're soon going to be up, they may not have water as they start their day. It provides us another way to give them some communication and notification on a situation in their neighborhood. This is not the same as an emergency alert and we would still go through Marin County's emergency alert system for a major emergency communications impacting greater number of properties in the community. But this is really for localizing that happened within our, our water system where that communication would be ideal. And it can also, when water's turned back on, also provide some links to tutorials or just good to know information about restarting your service if it's been interrupted. We've had some issues with just some plumbing in individuals' homes that have, I believe, led to some claims in the past. And it's really a matter of just educating on what to do or not to do right away after water's restored. And so it's a way we can interact with customers on that. And then item D, data-driven water efficiency outreach campaigns. This is really a continuation of last year. This work doesn't stop, but we'll continue to implement seasonal water efficiency campaigns that are really focused on targeting our high water users. And we'll be looking to do some specific work around the one-time increased turf rebate, specifically this year. And then of course, we'll be supporting the pilot AMI deployment effort with any outreach Going into item E, creative storytelling campaigns. So I've heard this come up quite a bit today, so happy to be able to highlight it here. But we'll continue this year to find good ways to tell the story of the district, talk about our programs and initiatives through the use of drone imagery of other visual assets, photography, video that our staff collect in the field so that we can really convey to our customers the work that we have going on, how we're investing ratepayer funds into all of our programs. And we, actually Sean mentioned it briefly earlier, but we just recently did a nice drone imagery video highlighting the Loganitis Creek Enhancement Project. And we hope to do a lot more of that. That's been really well received. We're seeing great engagement in the places that we've shared it. And so we're looking forward to partnering with staff to do more. And then item F, it's really focused on education with our youth. And so for this year, this is an ongoing item, but we will be continuing and connecting with youth around water education through the exist, district's existing programs, our classroom presentation offerings. We have a few different ones tailored to different age groups, our water walks on the watershed and then our Zoom Zoom musical watershed assemblies. And then item G, engagement with local municipalities. This is also a carryover from last year. We didn't quite get to it, but we are going to this year. And it's really, this one is about finding other ways to communicate with the communities that we serve, and that's by attending the local town and city's council meetings to provide periodic updates on things going on in the district that are relative, are, that are relevant to the communities where we're providing the presentation. And I'll pause there for any comment or question.
Only one. Have you thought about those European style signs with the smiley faces? You know, the ones they're talking about, hit the, the green is the smiley and then it turns into a frown. They're like five buttons. They frequently are put in, especially in Europe, in bathrooms, but they could work for anything. I'm thinking like having one in the front lobby, you know, how was your experience? You know, and you get it, I don't know what, where the data goes. I don't know what they, if they do anything with it. Maybe it's just for show, but I think they probably do read them. But it's a quick way of getting a survey back instantly, you know, how'd it go today? Good, bad, indifferent. And the other thing that's become pretty common, which I'm sure we're all more than aware of, is every time you have a phone interaction almost these days, it seems it follows up with a survey. You know, hold on to the phone and, and there'll be a two-question survey coming. Something that could be useful to get instantaneous feedback so they don't, it doesn't boil up in them. You know, they get a chance to express it immediately and be done with it. How'd this person do today? How was your experience? Blah, blah.
Right, thank you. Those are all things that we'll take back to staff to consider. Any other comments?
It's always a lot of activity, Adrienne. It's great to have the updates and, you know, the, the look forward. Thank you.
All right. Objective Three, industry engagement, growth and leadership. This objective's really focused on learning from others in the water industry, but also sharing with others and being part of that discussion and participation, sharing what our staff have learned and experienced here so that others can learn from Marin Water as well. And we are continuing work in all areas of this part of this, the work plan as well. So for industry associations, we, this is redundant of goal two, objective four C, and that work will continue this year. For professional development opportunities, we are going to continue to encourage our staff at all levels to engage in associations, submit abstracts for awards, join committees and other types of engagement opportunities that occur throughout the year. And that's not just specific to AWWA, to ACWA, but there's also HR conferences for communications. There's Public Information Officer trainings and for every kind of technical area, there's different associations that we are encouraging our staff to engage in. And then for item C, stakeholder collaboration and communication. So there's two items here. First, develop a stakeholder list and identify key contacts to connect with for ongoing relationship building and communications. So we are a part of a lot of associations and different organizations. And we currently are doing kind of an audit of what we have and pulling that list together, but also making sure that we do have a, a definite point of contact and a staff member that's assigned to really continue to work on building those relationships and, and the communications with those other groups. And so putting that list together is kind of the first step. And then the second item there, continue building working relationships with the Federated Indians of Greatin Rancheria. So this relationship building right now is largely facilitated through our involvement with ONE TAM. And one of the concerns of our tribal partner that has come up is that there is a concern that some of the stories of the lands are being lost. And so we'll continue to work through ONE TAM on involvement in those discussions and in the relationship building with Greatin Rancheria. However, we are also seeing that we have some specific projects this year where we may be able to have some opportunities to work with the Federated Indians of Greatin Rancheria on some storytelling as well. Our signage kiosk projects on the watershed is one area where we see that we may have some opportunity to capture that in the project. And so we'll be exploring that further. The first kiosk signage project that we'll be working on is Loganitis Creek Enhancement. And we do think that there could be some synergy there. And I'll pause there for any comments or questions.
Often I find that directors show up for local meetings and community events and, and, you know, really important times for us to connect with folks and it's, and it's just the directors and I would just love to see more staff there. I know they would love to see you. So building that list will help us, help you engage, it'll help the community be more in touch, and I think it'll help us all do a better job. So I'm glad to see that's on there.
Adrienne, if I could add one item, you know, in the past, we've, we have talked about more of a public relations oriented effort. And I know it's not one of the critical objectives we've identified in the five-year strategic plan, but it's just something to keep an eye on. I'll, you know, just for example, you know, we've heard so much about the negative impacts of water supply development in West Marin if we proceed with reservoir expansions. But what, what, what we don't hear about is the, the support that we provide to the agricultural community at times of drought. And so there is a give and take in almost every activity we do. I think that will, that will continue to be an issue that we face with whatever water supplied. I'll tell Troy.
Don't worry, I caught it.
But, but, but I guess, you know, some of those messages I think would, would be beneficial in, in, in these discussions, right? So I think that's under the, the category of PR and so just something to, to, to think about.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. We'll, we'll think about best place to land that, but I, I understand what you're getting at. All right, moving into our final objective of our final goal here, technology innovation and process improvements. And this one I think speaks for itself, but we want to make sure that everyone has the tools they need to do their jobs, that our tools are up to date and that we are learning from others and, and being creative in how we solve challenges that we face here at the district in our work. And so we have a lengthy list here of things and as you know, we have a lot of IT initiatives coming up. And so they certainly dominate a lot of the real estate here. And we are doing work in all areas this year on this objective, starting first with the internet. We are launching a new internet and that will come as part of the implementation of Microsoft 365. That's really the first step is getting that onboard for all of our staff. But then we'll be utilizing SharePoint, a feature of that suite, to stand up our new internet. And that's going to take some time and a lot of collaboration with staff to get that in place and make sure that everybody's trained on how to use the internet, how to save things in it, how to find things. So that'll be a big project, but one that I think will be a, a big enhancement for the district. And then item B, employee self-service function. So we will be implementing an employee-centric services portal that will be run by HR and payroll. And this is kind of the first phase of implementation of SAP or a new system, replacement system for SAP. And this will really make it so that staff can do a lot of things on their own, things that usually have to be done through a form that goes to HR. They can now go into this portal online and they'll be able to make changes to their distributions for their paychecks and handle a number of other tasks as well. We'll have a new timekeeping system as well. And then item C, workplace process and tech efficiency program. So this actually was rolled into goal five, objective one F. So we're not going to duplicate it here. And then item D, academia partnerships. So plans for this year is to assess and report to the board on our continued engagement with Isle Utilities, which is an association that the district joined as a piloting member this past year. And so we've had some collaboration with Isle, learn more about the services they offer. And our point person, our point staff person to Isle has been helping to connect staff members to different resources that are available through Isle. And so we'll continue to explore that, that resource and if it's something that the district finds useful. And then item E, succession planning through documented SOPs and training overlap. Alex did cover that in goal two, objective four B. We have a number of SOPs that we'll be addressing in this next year. And then AMI conversion and associated customer portal. Paul talked in length about in goal one, objective one C. And then our SAP selection, implementation and operational integration. This is really the big ticket item for IT and that's implementing the, the change to a new system. And so that will kick off in the first quarter of this year with the new payroll HR system. And then we expect completion in 2026 in the first quarter. And then finally, you had heard Brett talk about this a bit, but the online customer bill payment system replacement, that's coming up quick here and will be in place by quarter two when we're giving our progress report update. And so that's really the district's transition to a new customer online bill pay system. And so there'll be a lot of work to do right away on that, both on the technical side and then all of the communications to customers as well. And with that, we're at the end.
Great. Thank you, Adrienne, very much for that last section. Go ahead and open up to board member comments. Start, Director Mayor.
Just one recommendation would be that as you're starting to collect more electronic data, if the staff isn't doing it, I highly recommend a data security training to be implemented with the, the onboarding.
Thank you for this report and for the entire day. I know it was long, but I'm super appreciative that this team has set out a very robust set of goals, metrics, agendas. And I know it was not an easy process. I'm super proud of, of what you did to create the strategic plan that we approved last year and your diligence and reporting back on what's gone well and what needs still to be worked on and, and what we need to evolve. It shows that, that we're a listening and learning organization and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Director Kush.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for all of the preparation effort that goes into something like this. So much work, but it, I think it goes a long way in terms of just strengthening, you know, our, 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 our relationship and, and journey forward. So just look forward to the, you know, continued updates on the strategic plan. Thanks again. So just look forward to the, you know, continued updates on the strategic plan. Thanks again.
To, to echo a couple of comments already, thank you very much for sitting here all day with us and, and hanging out, especially when the goals or objectives weren't your own. And it's, I'd really like to appreciate all the work that went into the strategic, strategic plan last year, because it feels like this year was a little bit easier, wasn't as much work. And that was the goal, to build off of that in terms of the planning piece and keep it going. And it's, it's really good to see it aligned with the vision of the organization. And I feel like progress is being made. So I feel really good about what's coming out of today and, and what the work plan for the entire year looks like. So thank you very much for everyone involved. And in terms of keeping us on track, checking in, what kind of frequency are we going to see a, a progress report or an evaluation of how we're doing throughout calendar year 25?
Yeah, I, I think the, the plan anyway is similar to what we did this past year and do quarterly updates to the board of where we are with the work plan, what's moving forward, where have there been some friction points, new initiatives that came that are stressing resources, whatever it may be, but quarterly updates.
Excellent, thank you very much for that. And I have to acknowledge the last man standing in the public over there. So Bill, thank you for hanging out. If there's no additional board comments, I'll check to see if there's any public comment.
Very much. This is the first retreat I attended. I always thought it was a retreat from the public, but I'm so glad that you invited us in. And, and thank you for just a really engaging, comprehensive presentation. Everything is related and, and my last comment really includes Goals One, Four and Five. Starting out with the, the conservation goal, I, I know we've got a four million gallon a day by 2045 and we have 800,000 acre feet in five years. Both of those goals, I think, are pretty long. And I think it would be good to have a goal that, that's nearer term and that would engage the public, something that we could achieve while we're all here to see it. I, I have, I noticed in the current budget, I think water efficiency accounts for about 2% of every dollar. And capital projects and water supply is about 36 cents of each dollar. I'd like to see if we could bump up that water efficiency spending with a specific goal. And what I would have in mind is a million gallon challenge. And that is to see if we could come up with a program that would deliver us a million gallons a day in conservation. And I figure that's, that's about 1,000 acre feet a year. And if we could budget that at $2,500 per acre foot, which is competitive with other sources of supply and I think is, is in line with what other districts are spending, that would be a two and a half million dollar budget. And I'd like to suggest that we identify and test a program to do this. And I, I could see it announcing it internally, soliciting ideas, getting ideas from the public as we reach out to school districts, you know, let, let people, let kids comment and their families, check with other districts to see what they're doing and see if we could set a specific short-term goal, say within a couple of years, to have a program that would deliver us 1,000 acre feet a year for a budget of about $2.5 million. I'm a numbers guy and, and I'm, I'm someone who, who likes to set an objective and then measure as we're achieving it. It would just really help me to see that stamp with a real thoughtful, thoughtful program and the money behind it to do it. Thank you so much.
Any additional comments? Okay, I think with that, oh, sorry, Ben.
Yeah, I, I do have just a couple wrap-up. Obviously quite a bit of work in front of us coming year. Did want to thank the board for the day you spent with us. This is all our job, full-time, so, but the board, to spend this kind of time. Really appreciate the input and comments you provided and direction you provided us. Also wanted to thank Adrian and Terry who set the day up and did all the background work to, to make the day successful. Thank you guys, as well as the presenters. And just next steps, two, you know, overarching next steps. One is the next meeting, as Molly noted, and I won't repeat it all, bringing the committees and the dual noticing item. And then at a subsequent meeting, we'll bring the updated work plan that has brought in the comments and direction from the board and present that and move forward with the work ahead of us. So thank you so much for the day.
Great. And before the battery runs out on this one, thank you. I look forward to seeing everyone at the current operations meeting on Friday. With that.